Good evening, I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Tawala.
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Weselak.
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone. There are a few changes to the agenda tonight in order to allow for the necessary time to cover the department budget presentations. So this evening, we will have the legislative update with our lobbyists, Ann Seacott. The series of, oh, I'm sorry, we will then have a voting session on the second reading ordinance, make sure people can hear me, second reading ordinance approving the FY25 budget amendment number three. And then we will have presentations this evening that consist of budget work sessions, budget, department budget presentations, the library, housing and community development departments, public works department of stormwater. And then lastly, we have recommendations for FY26 sidewalk and traffic calming projects. In terms of next items on the agenda.
Has Ann joined us yet? Yes, wonderful. Hello, Ann, good evening. So we are joined by Ann Seacott, who is our lobbyist in Annapolis.
Good evening, everyone, I hope you're well. Wanted to let you know that, you know, last week, we talked about crossover coming up, crossover, crossover has come and gone. We've got about three weeks left in session. What crossover means is that house bills need to be in the senate, senate bills need to be in the house. Bills that do not make it by crossover are not automatically dead, they just have higher hurdles to overcome to pass. Bills that make it by crossover are not guaranteed to make it all the way to the finish line. So we don't take any of those things for granted. The quick rundown on some of the things that are new to having crossed by crossover, we knew some of the things, couple of the big environmental bills related to energy performance in buildings and the extreme weather bills are new, they have moved. We've had good progress on some of the pedestrian traffic safety bills related to sidewalk repair and speed limits. The immigration bills, there are three, three bills that are significant bills that are passing, one related to sensitive locations and one related to data privacy and the other relating to the 20, 287G program. So those bills are moving forward and, you know, we continue to consult with CASA and other allies on, on those bills. There is a hearing tomorrow that council member Landman will be testifying at on the restrictive covenants, the bill had passed the senate, it's now in the house. It's one of those bills that is an example of something that passed, doesn't have opposition, should be fine, but we never take it for granted. So we will do the, the council member will do the testimony tomorrow and we'll make sure that leaders on the committee are committed to moving the bill. And then I also wanted to say, we heard budget decisions today from the House Appropriations Subcommittee. So they have made decisions on some of the budget cuts that they are and are not taking. Tomorrow, we will hear additional budget decisions related to cuts, we will hear all, all things related to the Barfa, the Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act. So that will be other kinds of ways that money will be saved, spent, and how taxes will be raised. So we'll hear all of that tomorrow afternoon, it'll probably be a pretty long afternoon listening to, to all of that and we'll report out what we hear. The budget is expected to be finished this week, or I'm sorry, the end of next week in the house with the senate taking it up, probably at the very end of next week. So we do anticipate the budget being done on time and it's just a matter of, you know, some of those decisions. I did want to mention one thing in particular that was decided today or reported today. Councilmember Tawala had asked me about the state aid for police protection program. There was a concern raised and because there was a cut proposed of $49 million to that program and the, the house subcommittee rejected that cut. So that's hopefully a bit of good news for folks. That's all.
Great, thank you so much. I'm just checking to see if our council members have any questions. Ann, I just want to say how much I appreciate all of the work that you're doing. There's just been a lot that has been happening in terms of where things are heading in terms of crossover. I know that one of the bills that we've been following very closely, the good cause legislation may have landed on the chopping room, on the cutting room floor, but we are continuing to monitor a few other bills that still have some life that the city has been really advocating for. And, and just remind me, I think there's, there's two. One was the alcohol board bill around providing, requiring the liquor, liquor board to consider public health data and public safety data when they are awarding licenses. And the other is the sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
Sidewalk, okay.
Sidewalks is, is moving and I actually don't know off the top of my head if that has a hearing yet, but the, the liquor license bill does have a hearing next week. So I'll follow up with you about that.
Perfect. Okay, all right, excellent. Not seeing any additional questions again, I just want to thank council member Landman for taking the trek down to Annapolis for the team tomorrow. I really appreciate your work on this and I do want to just continue to echo my appreciation for the working group that has been looking at all of the bills, council member Weselak and council member Tawala as well, because I know that we've all been practically writing testimony, reviewing testimony, talking to legislators to really try to move the city's agenda forward. And, and most of all, thank you, Ann, for all of the work that you've been doing this legislative session.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to public comments on voting items. And just as a reminder, tonight, the voting item that we have is the, it is the second reading ordinance approving FY25 budget amendment number three. So do we have any comments on the second reading ordinance approving FY25 budget amendment number three? Not seeing any in the room. Do we have any virtual comments on the voting item for this evening? Okay, perfect. All right, we're going to move to general public comments this evening. Do we have any general public comments? Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Circe and county and council members. My name is Omar Marroking and I am the Farmers Market Program Manager for Crossroads Community Food Network, a Tacoma-based food equity nonprofit. I am following up on an email sent to you, each of you, by my colleagues Janet Rumble, Crossroads Deputy Director back in January. Janet articulated some important points that I would like to reiterate this evening. As we all know, the pandemic and its economic aftermath have exacerbated food insecurity in our community, amplifying the need for robust, lasting support systems. According to the Capital Area Food Bank's 2024 Hunger Heat Map, food insecurity in Tacoma Park has reached alarming levels. In five consolidated census tracts, 34 to 72% of households are struggling to access adequate food, an average of 44.6%. Think about that for a moment. This means that almost half of our neighbors are struggling to put food on the table, a stark and unacceptable reality in a community as progressive and compassionate as ours. As a resident of Tacoma Parks Ward Five and a member of Rolling Terrace Elementary School, PTA, I can speak directly to the needs of many of our community members. Every week, I'm speaking with parents at the market or at school on how they are doing everything they can to feed their families to survive, often with limited resources and it's not getting easier. The growing demand for fresh eggs at the farmer's market underscores the increasing need for affordable, affordable, healthy food in Tacoma Park. Matching dollars for nutrition, for nutrition benefits like SNAP and WIC helps, helps families access fresh, locally grown produce. My family experienced firsthand the benefits from Crossroads Fresh Checks Program as WIC recipients when my son was a baby. Fresh checks helped us stretch our WIC dollars to buy more sweet potatoes, apples and broccoli, perfect for homemade baby food. All are still favorites of my now seven-year-old. In lights of these challenges, I urge the city council to prioritize the following actions to combat food insecurity and expand food access in our community. Continue to support Crossroads Fresh Checks Program. It's how so many community members get access to fresh, healthy food. Work with local groups to get more people signed up for SNAP and other food benefits. This makes sure everyone who qualifies gets help. Invest in community gardens and urban agriculture that will help produce more food right here in Tacoma Park and strengthen partnerships with other local food providers and pantries. This ensures food gets to the people who need it most. The rise in food insecurity in Tacoma Park demands immediate sustained action. By prioritizing food access, we can build a more equitable and resilient community where every resident has reliable access to nutritious food and the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your time and attention to this critical issue.
Thank you very much. Do we, do we have any other public comments this evening, general public comments? Come on down. Hello.
Hi, Mayor Circe and council members.
Let's make sure we can bring your mic down a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. My name is Pamela Fields, I am representing the Tacoma Foundation, I am their grants manager. And many of you know about the work of the Tacoma Foundation, but I wanted to remind you that we, of the role that we play in the community and to ask you to spread the word about our current grant cycle, which has a deadline of 5:00 PM Friday, April 25th. The mission of the Tacoma Foundation is to make grants that promote socially, environmentally, economically and culturally healthy Tacoma Park community. The foundation sponsors two grant cycles each year, awarding a total of about $20,000 or $25,000 each cycle. Again, so our current cycle is open until April 25th. The foundation seeks proposals from organizations that encourage and involve resident participation in community life, build connections between people, empower community-based groups to address immediate community concerns, and provide opportunities for residents from marginalized communities that would not be possible otherwise. The foundation strives to allocate funding in the most diverse, fair and strategic way possible. And that we have two types of grants. One is called the community grant, and that is designed to support small nonprofit organizations and their overarching mission. Those are generally nonprofits with an annual budget of less than $150,000. And these grants are currently capped at $5,000. Grants and then solidarity grants, which are designed to demonstrate and support and commitment to larger nonprofit organizations doing work that aligns with the Tacoma Foundation's mission. And those are currently capped at $1,000. So you're our best partners in this, we rely on you to know your constituents, to send them our way, identify them, send them our way. Each of you has received an announcement for this cycle, but I'll resend it after this. And I just wanted to take a moment to express the foundation's strong and continuing support for the vital work of local grassroots organizations, especially in light of the potential for federal budget cuts and policy changes which may curb programs that benefit vulnerable and marginalized populations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening, everybody, my name is David Reed, I live in Ward Two. As a member of the community budget working group, I would like to thank council members for their discussions with city residents about the FY26 budget. My appreciation begins with the mayor's participation in our group's budget forum and runs through the several meetings organized by council members during the past weeks. These engagements are important steps in embracing the basic notion that Tacoma Park is a community of diverse people with diverse needs, not a city that prioritizes hiring new staff and erecting buildings. How many times over the past weeks have I heard members on the DIA say, "I'm really worried about low staff morale," or "above all, we need to protect the jobs of our staff." Well, of course, I too want city staff to be treated fairly and to enjoy employment stability. But as a result of your discussions with residents, I hope that your attention has shifted toward hearing that the morale of residents across the city has been profoundly shaken. Residents are very anxious about coming financial shocks, they fear layoffs of federal employees, they anticipate higher state and county taxes, user fees and penalties, and they hear the frequent warnings of recession, even from the president. In this context, I am a bit perplexed by the city manager's proposed budget that projected an unassigned reserve at the end of FY26 of $9 million. That's approximately 28% of the year's total projected revenues. And that indeed is 11 percentage points higher than the reserve balance of 17% required by the vote of council. What I really find surprising is that there's no proposal to reduce our tax burden. In FY29, we have the opportunity to correct the city's questionable financial management that has steadily increased residential property rates over a 20-year period. Our taxes are nearly double those of any community in our county. So it seems to me that now is the time to reverse that trend, to reduce the city's tax rate to ensure the financial stability of thousands of residents. Our budgets should reflect not only are social compact with low-income residents, but also with other economically stressed residents, including families with young children, retirees on fixed incomes, and those at risk for job loss or worsening economy. So that end in the coming days, we will be making recommendations to scale back construction projects and to right-size city staff hiring and top salaries and to reduce the city's residential property tax rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening, I'm Therese Gibson, Pine Avenue. We have three major capital projects queued up immediately behind the $20 million library and rec department development that went far beyond what residents expected. I don't know how to square the thousands of federal employees and federal contractors being fired and the trauma of other residents as well with the spending proposed in this city now. I guess there are council members who think they don't have to listen to someone like me because I live in Ward Three. But it doesn't really matter who you are or where you live in Tacoma Park, because outside of Ward Four, almost everyone else is subject to paying more for housing due to increased taxes if their dwelling assessment increased. The $160,000 from the general fund for activities related to the rec centers pre-development is just the start of city spending on this project. We have neither the economic bandwidth nor the expertise to manage such a project. Please consider saving this money and instead organizing a fair access Tacoma Committee to advocate for $18 million for a county rec center as the town of Poolsville successfully did. I worked on a coalition that obtained $57 million to rebuild Lee Middle School near Kennedy High School, taking a decrepit moldy facility from the bottom of MCPS's CIP list to the top of it because we hustled and put that school where it deserved to be at the top of the list. Advocating with the county for CIP resources can be a successful endeavor, just ask Poolsville, they hustled. It may be even faster to try working with the county than it will be to seek an expensive public-private development partnership. If we want that resource for our kids, we should get it the cheapest and the fastest way we can. Please consider a more modest build with the atrium project. Renovate the dispatch center and the one current restroom. There are eight new restrooms upstairs in the library and rec department, we don't need more bathrooms, give one of those proposed atrium bathrooms to Public Works. What is the deal with bathrooms in this city? I don't get it, but there it is. The new library and rec departments come at an opportunity cost for other departments such as Public Works. Once the city has $263,000 from a state grant, there is currently $1 million in the city's CIB, CIP budget for further planning and construction. Who knows what the final numbers on this project will be? As Director Braithwaite noted in 2022, it's the Wild West out there with pricing construction projects. City leaders worry about staff being demoralized, but we're demoralized as residents as well. We ask you to look for a different solution beyond heightened spending to keep pace with the latest property tax revenue fund mandated by the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Do we have any virtual public comments?
We have Mary Jane Machuie online.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sorry.
Arthur David Olson, Ward Four, Herbie Hancock Avenue, on equity and the railroad and public utility tax. Since there are no taxable railroads in the city, I'll call it the utility tax. Thanks to city staff for verifying that such taxes are passed on to all Maryland customers of a company, given Pepco's 562,000 customers in Maryland, the impact of a Tacoma Park tax increase will be minimal for Marylanders in general and for Tacoma Park residents in particular. Staff has previously reported that the city's utility rate is in the middle of those of nearby jurisdictions. I'm confident that having a middling rate is not an operating principle of the city. is not an operating principle of the city. Otherwise, the property tax rate would be under 30 cents. Last year, I suggested that since Tacoma Park homeowners pay the highest city property tax in Montgomery County, utilities should pay the highest rate as well. Since Kensington's utility rate is $5, I suggested $5.01. I later realized that I was wrong. It's not just that Tacoma Park homeowners pay the most. It's that they pay 26 cents more than any other city. With that in mind, the utility rate would be $5.26. And then I realized I was wrong again. It's not just that Tacoma Park homeowners pay 26 cents more. It's that they pay 89% more than in any other city. With that in mind, the utility rate would be 89% more than $5, or $9.45. With a legitimate argument for $9.45, $5.01 seems like a reasonable compromise. But at the very least, in a year when the city is proposing increasing property tax revenue by 2.94%, it's best to also increase utility tax revenue by at least 2.94%. That can be accomplished with a rate of $1.71, 3 cents more than the city manager's proposal. Paraphrasing Russell B. Long, the attitude of some folks is, "Don't tax you, don't tax me, tax that person behind the tree." Given what Pepco has done to trees in the city, I hope you won't give them one to hide behind. I hope that you'll enact a utility tax rate somewhere between $1.71 and $9.45. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do there are public comments?
I'm Tom Gagliardo. I live near the middle school in Ward One. I'm your neighbor. I haven't spoken since before the election, so congratulations to all of you on your election or reelection, as the case may be. And to the four new members, welcome. I noticed that in the budget, there's a proposal for an $85,000 item for the Housing and Community Development Department to hire a consultant. I will share with you all the information I've collected on rent stabilization, including literature reviews and various studies. But I'm going to highly recommend to you a study that was done at the University of Minnesota's Center for Urban and Regional Affairs. And I'm just going to tonight tell you what their primary takeaways were. The empirical, I'm quoting, "The empirical research indicates that rent regulations have been effective at achieving two of their primary goals: maintaining below-market rent levels and moderating price appreciation." Rent stabilization stabilized the neighborhood, now humanized it. It means keeping people in their homes and not allowing them to be priced out. Second finding, there was widespread agreement in the empirical literature that rent stabilization, excuse me, rent regulation increases housing stability for tenants who live in regulated units. Third finding, little empirical evidence shows that rent control policies negatively impact new construction. You're going to spend $85,000 for somebody to tell you how many units are currently under rent stabilization, how many may have been converted to condos, and things of that sort. They're also going to do a community outreach. You are the elected officials. You're going to decide what happens to rent stabilization. I don't have to tell you. I congratulate you for your efforts to reach out to the community. You don't need to pay somebody to do what you're already going to do. So with that, I'm going to suggest that you strike that item from the budget. It's your decision. I respect your decision. But it really is an unnecessary expense, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
Excuse me, I left out the most important thing. The first thing you should do is to talk to the people directly affected. Don't talk to a consultant. Talk to the people who live in rent-controlled, rent-stabilized units and the landlords who rent to them. Find out what they say. And don't have a consultant do it. You're the elected officials.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Okay, all right. So do... Okay, all right. Do we have any virtual public comments this evening?
Once again, I think we have Mary Machuie online.
Ms. Machuie, are you on the line? Okay, we'll give her a second. I just realized in the attempt to kind of expedite things that I did not go through the rolling agenda. So I will run through the rolling agenda, and then we wait to see if Ms. Machuie joins us. So just as a reminder for folks today, again, we have the legislative update. We will have voting session on the second reading ordinance approving FY25 budget amendment number three. And the presentations or work, budget work sessions are department budget presentations for the library, Housing and Community Development Department, Public Works Department, and Stormwater, and recommendations for the FY25 sidewalk and traffic calming projects. On Wednesday, March 26, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a public hearing. It is the first public hearing on the FY26 budget. We will have a legislative update and then followed by voting sessions. The resolution repealing Resolution 2016-16 regarding eligible uses of the community development block grant funds, resolution revising the guidelines for the community quality of life grant program, first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code 1320.04A9, parking or standing prohibited areas. The resolution adopting the 2025-2026 city council priorities. We'll then have two presentations. The first is a quarterly financial report, FY25 second quarter, followed by the budget reconciliation spreadsheet. And then we will have continuation of our budget work sessions with the department budget presentations of the Recreation Department, the Police Department, and then the General Government, City Manager's Office, Information Technology, Human Resources, ARPA, Finance, and City Clerk Communications. On Wednesday, April 2, the city council will have its regular meeting at 7:30 PM. We'll have a proclamation for the record, Monarch pledge proclamation. We'll have a legislative update, a voting session on the second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code 1320.040A9, parking or standing prohibited areas. And then we will begin our budget reconciliation process. We'll have two sessions, budget reconciliation, sidewalk and traffic calming project recommendations follow-up. And then we'll also continue with budget reconciliation. On Wednesday, April 9, the city council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have the second public hearing on the FY26 budget, followed by the legislative update. And then we'll have two presentations. One is a union presentation from Ask Me. And then the second is a performance measurement project update. And then we will continue with our budget reconciliation. And with that, I'm just going to check to see if Ms. Machuie has joined us. Okay. Not, not, is she not on the line?
She is there, but I believe, for some reason, she's not able to speak. I don't know.
Okay, all right. Well, we will continue to move forward with the agenda. And if we're able to get Ms. Machuie in, we will figure out a way to get her into the discussion. Now we're going to move on to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Hanzak.
Can you hear me? Yeah? It doesn't sound like, okay. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give special thanks to everyone who came out to speak tonight. I first want to acknowledge Ward Five resident Omar Marquinhos. Thanks for coming out and speaking about Crossroads. I know in our ward especially, I know that we live nearby and we see a lot of the food insecurity that you've just described with the data. And Ms. Fields, I don't know if she's still here. I definitely want to get the Tacoma Foundation grants information out to constituents. I've had a number of new potential grantees that have been eager to hear about that grants process. And for those who spoke about the budget, I will appreciate being able to talk about all of these things over the coming weeks. There's a lot to bear in mind right now. A lot of things are changing fast. And please do not think that we are not taking into consideration the extreme pressures that many households are under. And I just want to say, you know, my health is included. So if you see me voting for or against infrastructure projects, just for example, whatever it is that I'm doing, I'm doing that knowing that my budget in my household is also cut. But I got to think about the long term, and I got to really think hard about those decisions. I don't know yet what I'm going to decide. And on that note, I, on this coming Tuesday at 7:00 PM, I will be hosting my winter quarterly Ward Five meeting, and that will be focused on the budget conversations. And hopefully, we can have a Q and A with anyone who shows up from Ward Five. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember DeBala.
So for those of you who are not exhausted already by budget meetings, there's two coming up in Ward Two. Two more. This Sunday, 4 o'clock, at Lego Creek Park at the Bottom of Flower in that little gazebo there. Weather depending. And Monday, at Spring Mill Bakery at noon, for anybody. And these are drop-ins, so just drop in and we can chat. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. Any other council comments? Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to the residents who spoke this evening. And of course, especially, is my mic on?
It doesn't sound like it.
Sorry. Give him a second in the back. Okay, thanks. Thank you to the residents who spoke tonight, especially, of course, the ones from Ward One. I really appreciated your comments about the putting the needs of people first. And those thoughts will be foremost in my mind as we think about the budget, including the people who work for the city. But putting people's needs first, I think, is very important. I appreciated the comments about rent stabilization from Ward One's own Tom Gagliardo. I'd like to refer you to the letter that was signed by the mayor and several council members in support of the Just Cause legislation, which may or may not succeed. But it echoed many of the points that were made in your comment about the University of Minnesota study. And so there's at least myself, several other council members, and the mayor signed that letter. And I think it's a very important statement about how we feel about balancing the needs of developers and building owners and the needs of residents in a way that's fair and equitable. I wanted to also thank you for the comment about having meetings on the budget. I will be having a constituents' meeting. I'm calling it a wine and wine evening on the 31st, so that we can all wine together about the economic situation of the city and what's happening to us, our friends in the federal government. That'll be at the, at the, I forget the name of the art gallery next door to, next door to the Kittner Studios, next door to Salon Jam on the evening of the 31st. So I hope to see many of Ward One friends there. And finally, let me say, the mayor and I had an opportunity to attend a really wonderful event that was at the Dance Place in celebration of their 20 years in Tacoma Park. They are right on the borderline with DC, but we can claim them as our own. And it was a really wonderful evening, including song, dance, and drumming. And I don't have rhythm. I think I proved that definitively during the evening. But it was really wonderful to see how many people from our community and from all around the DC area are benefiting from the Dance Exchange. So I'm glad they're our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Westle.
I'm going to piggyback on that because one of my comments is also about a wonderful dance academy. But first, I wanted to just thank all the public commenters tonight, as well as the public commenters from last week that I listened to on Zoom from home, but was not able to actually respond and engage appropriately. But thank you for the feedback. This past weekend, I went to the Tal Galal showcase. It was hosted by the Tal Academy of Dance. The Tal Academy of Dance is an Indian dance company founded 10 years ago. It was their 10th anniversary. And I believe they're very close to where Dance Exchange is. They have several locations, one in Tacoma Park. It was a showcase at Blair High School with kids, I think the youngest were four up to adults. It was a really wonderful time. I saw, I went with my daughter because her school best friend was performing, which was great, and saw some other residents up there dancing. So it was a really great time. And I wanted to congratulate them on their 10th anniversary. And if you want to know more about that, it's at T-A-A-L, tal, dancedc.org. I also volunteered with Meals on Wheels to deliver a few meals towards six residents. They do fantastic work and provide meals to 45 Tacoma Park residents out of the kitchen. That's at 7410 New Hampshire. If you'd like to learn more about receiving their services or volunteering or donating to support them, their website is M-O-W Tacoma.org. And lastly, March 31st is International Transgender Visibility Day. I just got some information for an event that will be that day in Bethesda that's being hosted by an organization called Live in Your Truth. And it's cosponsored by Montgomery County Pride Family. So I'm just putting that out there. I don't know yet if or how I'll be able to participate. I hope I can to support that. And information on that is at livinyourtruth.org. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Westle. Councilmember Slagle.
Thank you, Mayor Circe. Thank you to everyone who made the informed comments tonight with suggestions for the budget, both on the revenue and the expenditure side. And I just wanted to acknowledge you, my Ward Three neighbor Therese Gibson, with your expertise, your comments about focusing on the most important objectives with projects, and also your idea of hustling to get things moved up on the county CIP list and get help from the county. I think it's a good time for creative, creative problem solving. I too am having a Ward Three budget conversation. It will be at Historic Tacoma this Sunday, 3:00 to 5:00 PM. 3:00 to 4:00 will be the core of it, and then an hour for people to stick around. I will have an overview of the budget to the best of my ability, the unknowns and the to-be-determined issues, some key questions for framing conversation. And then we'll have a good chunk of conversation time. So I appreciate all the input that people can give through email or at that meeting. And I also plan to organize a Zoom-based conversation in the next week or so, along with another conversation later in the process when we have more information about reconciliation items, county-state budget things. A couple other things. If you're a lower moderate income owner, I wanted to thank Sandra Philippi for sharing that an organization called Building Change may be able to provide you with financial assistance for weatherization. I also was, I appreciated Mr. Marquinhos' testimony and focusing on food insecurity. And related to Crossroads, the Crossroads Multi-Farm CSA is now accepting signups. And so consider signing up for that. Thank you to City Manager Dispirito for advocating for signal timing adjustments at the junction. I know that's an ongoing issue, and I appreciate your help with that. Some other things I'm working on are redesign of the Eastern Avenue Rehab Project, maybe improving the visibility of the stop sign at Carroll and Lincoln. And thanks for your help with that, too, Mr. City Manager. Thanks to the residents for advocating for cleanup all around the 6400 block of New Hampshire Avenue. I took a walk around, took photos. Really needs attention. And last thing, we have the first day of spring coming up, and I was so excited to see Friends of Native Trees Tacoma advising us about holding off on spring cleanup if you tend to any kind of a yard. Last year, I put off raking leaves in many areas of the yard and put off mowing the grass till 1st of June. That was pretty easy to do. And it was amazing to see how many more moths and fireflies we had later in the summer. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say quickly, thank you to all of our educators in the state. I attended the Walk and Rally to Protect Public Education this morning with Mayor Circe at Tacoma Park Middle School. That's my old school. It's called Tacoma Park Junior High, back when I was a young lad. And along with Will Jawando, our county councilman. And I just think it's important that we support our educators right now as the threat exists to reduce the revenue that's going towards our public education. I'm a product of public education, so I understand the importance of those educators. My daughter's a public educator in Prince George's County, and I understand the stresses that they have. I coach a group of young men twice a week for an hour, and I come home ready to pull a little hair I have left out and ready for adult beverage. So I can't imagine being locked in a school with these kids every day of the week. So hats off to them. I do know what they go through. I've heard stories from my daughter about she works with special needs kids and coming home having been hit. And for the money that they do it, and the dedication, and the care that they have for these kids, it needs to be respected. It needs to be honored. And we need to support our local schools and our local teachers. If you have the flexibility and your time and in your wallets, please do it, especially now when it's most needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. I want to thank everyone that provided comments tonight. As I said previously, now is a time that is one of the more difficult times to balance a budget because you have to read a lot of tea leaves and try to anticipate what might be the best approach to not only address the known concerns that we have with the budget, but to prepare for the unknown and be able to predict what future needs may be. So I appreciate my colleagues and all of the work that our staff has been doing to not only work to develop the budget, but to take all of these factors into consideration because it's not an easy feat. You know, I remember when we were trying to balance a budget with COVID, and it was before COVID, it was COVID. This feels very reminiscent of that because we didn't know what we didn't know. And we had to have some pretty hard discussions with the community. I still remember, people were very upset when we canceled the Halloween parade, the costume test. And it's like, no, 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 no. We have to prepare for the reality that there may not be an ability for us to gather later in this fiscal year. And even though we hope for the best, it may be a need for us to prepare for the worst. And so I think that this budget is no different. There's a reason why our staff are recommending that we increase our reserves beyond our 17%. It is so that we have the resources in the storehouse in case we need them, right? Because we don't know what we don't know. So I, but I appreciate all of the feedback that we've received thus far. Keep those comments coming. I know it has helped me. I know residents have asked, hey, Mayor, why is it that your tax rates are different than the others? And I said, well, you can't compare just tax rates directly. And he said, well, why not? I was like, well, one, the assessed values of homes in all of these different municipalities is different. So matters revenues. But also, many people don't know that the services across all of these communities vary greatly, greatly. So to compare a tax rate alone gives you a false sense of understanding. I actually recently learned, I did not know this, Gaithersburg Public Works does not pick up their trash. I did not know that. I was talking to the mayor. It's like, you don't pick up trash? It's like, no, we do not pick up trash. So there are things that we do bulk, we do recycling, but we do not pick up regular weekly trash. Residents have to contract out and figure out their own private service for that. So we're learning a lot. I think that many of us are asking those questions and trying to understand what it is that we value as a community, what it is that our brethren across the county are doing and how they're doing it, to try to identify ways in which we can collaborate to make sure that we're being the best users of taxpayer dollars, which is really important to me. Really quick, just on that note, we have a meet and confer with the county council in Rockville on Tuesday, March 25th. As I mentioned, we love to come together as a municipal league in Montgomery County to try to tag-team the county to make sure that we're getting our necessary resources. So that is happening next week. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah. The other big thing, I do want to thank our staff. There's been discussions around what are we doing to try to bring in those county resources into the city? And please know that we're doing it behind the scenes, but we are nagging the county about a number of different things. One, I do just want to note, I know that the police department issued a notification that the city residents are eligible for the camera rebate program through the county. The county is still working on the logistics to try to figure out how to include us in that. So I just ask for everyone's patience as the chief and I are continuing to work with the county to make sure that Tacoma Park is included in that. I am relentless on that front. So we are still working on it, and I'm just asking everybody, please just hold off for right now while we continue to work with the county to make sure that the City of Tacoma Park residents are able to take advantage of that opportunity. The other big thing, on Friday, I will be presenting to the CAP Ambassador's Program at Montgomery Blair. So that is an exciting opportunity. I love every chance I get to engage with our students, especially those that are just so committed to public service. I said, when Councilmember Hanzak and Councilmember Dibala and I were able to participate in the Boy Scouts, Eagle Scouts ceremony for some members of Troop 33, that in times such as these, when you question the moral compass of adults, it is so heartwarming when you're able to be surrounded by youth with a desire to serve and a desire to give. So I will be doing that on Friday, and I think that is it. Again, want to thank Tacoma Foundation and the Tacoma Line and Crossroads for coming out and continuing to stress all of the wonderful work that you all are doing. And so with that, I think that's all we have. I'll turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel? Guests? From the Housing and Community Development Department, the Purple Line Construction is reaching New Hampshire Avenue. The construction team will be closing University Boulevard to traffic at New Hampshire Avenue on November 27. Both southbound and northbound New Hampshire Avenue will be required to turn right.
What month did you say?
March.
March 20.
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry? March 27. Both southbound and northbound New Hampshire Avenue will be required to turn right, and University Boulevard traffic will not be able to turn left. The construction team estimates detours will add roughly 10 to 15 minutes. Construction is expected to take approximately four weeks. Signage will begin going up tomorrow ahead of the closure. The Old Town Business Association will be touching up the paint on the crosswalk of Laurel Avenue on March 20. Southbound Laurel between Carroll Avenue and Eastern Avenue will be closed between 10:00 AM, March 20, which is tomorrow, and 7:00 AM, March 21, which is Friday. We thank you for your patience as OTBA refreshes a symbol of our shared values. Police Department. Important notice, the City of Tacoma Park is transitioning from X, Twitter, to Blue Sky. For the next 60 days, we will continue crossposting on both platforms, but as of June 1, 2025, we will no longer be active on X. This decision reflects our commitment to platforms that align with the morals and ethics of our community. There will be more information coming, but if you're interested in making a switch with us, you can do so for free at www.bluesky.com. Recreation Department. Registration opened on Monday for city residents for spring and summer classes. Non-residents registration will open on Monday, March 24. Note, spring break and summer camp registration is well underway, and some camp sessions are already full. The Recreation Center is hosting its annual fitness expo on April 5. Short class demos will be going on all day, as well as exhibiting from various health-related agencies. The event is 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Recreation Center at 7315 New Hampshire Avenue. That will be April 5. Yes, the annual fitness expo at the Rec Center, April 5. And it's free. City Manager's Office. You are invited, as a public, to and encouraged to provide feedback on the fiscal year 2026 budget for the City of Tacoma Park. Among ways that you can express your thoughts, you can try out our budgeting tool called Balancing Act. A link will be included in tomorrow's posted City Manager's comments. This budget simulation is a way for you to learn more about the city's spending and revenues. The module starts with a snapshot of revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. As you work through the module, you have the ability to adjust various expenditures and revenues by using the plus and minus symbols. Real-time updates will show the impact of your funding choices at the top of the screen. And before submitting, please provide comments as you adjust the budget so we can understand your reason for adjusting each item. We're happy to offer that service. And finally, I'm very pleased to publicly announce that I have appointed Esmaara Hopte as Deputy City Manager effective March 25. Ms. Hopte is a seasoned local government professional with heavy experience in management, housing, community development, analysis, community services, finance, and grants. Presently, Esmaara serves as Montgomery County's Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development. Previously, Esmaara served as the Director of Housing and Community Development for the City of Rockville, where I appointed her to that position from her previous position of Chief of Housing. Esmaara and I worked closely for seven years as she and her team produced incredible services for that community. Esmaara has also served as Development Project Manager for the District of Columbia Housing Authority in Washington, DC, where she managed the large-scale, mixed-income, mixed-finance, and mixed-use real estate development projects. She's extremely familiar with Montgomery County and the DMV. She is well-networked with governmental and nonprofit professionals throughout our region, and she has also earned a master's degree in urban and regional planning. Esmaara will be assuming the Deputy City Manager role and responsibilities that Andrew Boldick currently holds. Andrew sadly is relocating for another professional position. Andrew has done a phenomenal job during his years in Tacoma Park, first as our ARPA manager, then as a Deputy City Manager, and will be greatly missed. And that's my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move into our voting session for this evening. The first item is the the Second Review Ordinance approving FY25 Budget Amendment Number Three. Do we have any edits or comments from the city staff on this item?
There are no changes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Would someone like to move the Second Review Ordinance approving FY25 Budget Amendment Number Three?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Schlegel seconded. With that, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Weselak?
Yes.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to move into our series of budget work sessions. The first group, I guess I'll turn things over to the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll get this teed up here.
Sure. Would it be okay if you take a quick seven-minute break? Awesome. Take a quick break while we get All right, thank you all so much for this break. We are moving into our budget work session. And just as a little FYI for my colleagues, especially those where this is your first time dealing with the budget. One, I just want to make sure that we're not here all night. I want to ask for everyone to please respect their colleagues and ask one question and then allow for other council members to ask. And once we've done the rounds, we can follow up if there's enough time for that particular department's Q and A section. And then that's how we'll get through these components. I do just want to, I know that we're going to talk, I believe, next week, but I don't test my brain right now, about budget reconciliation. And so, one of the things that is important for people to understand is that, one, you don't have only one option to provide questions during this meeting. You have the opportunity to send in questions over the course of the week so that staff can be prepared to provide you with written responses. As a reminder, those lists of budget-related questions should go to David, and David will work with staff and the like to make sure that those questions come forward. During the presentation next week, when we talk about budget reconciliation, I just want to let people know what it is, right? It's the stage in the process where council members can recommend changes to the budget. It is where you can recommend adding things, where you can recommend cutting things. It's the time in the budget where we develop a list of modifications. Staff may also present a list of budget modifications to the council for review. We will have, as I went through the rolling agenda, we will have three various budget reconciliation sessions before we vote on the budget reconciliation list. And when we have the presentation on budget reconciliation, there is a handy-dandy spreadsheet that staff will walk through, and that allows you to, as you are considering modifications to the budget, see in real time how that may impact the tax rate, how that may impact reserves, and how that may ultimately impact the overall budget. So I just want to pause to see just whether or not there are any questions procedurally in terms of how we're going to get through this evening and how I'm hoping we'll be able to get through the rest of the department meetings in making the most effective use of our time. And you'll learn more about budget reconciliation, but I just want to give folks a heads-up that those sessions will be coming later. So as you're thinking about questions to ask, questions around modifications and the impacts of modifications to the budget are things that are part of reconciliation. Tonight is more around trying to obtain some clarity regarding the items that are actually included in the budget. All right. Excellent. If you have no questions, I'm going to turn things over to City Management to kick us off with this series of budget work session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce our initial budget presentation tonight. Jessica Jones, the Director of Library at the City of Tacoma Park. And Jessica, you'd like to walk through a presentation?
Sure. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the library's proposed budget for fiscal year 26. I am going to preface this by saying this is a maintenance-of-effort budget to reflect the uncertainty that our residents and community are experiencing and to be respectful of shared resources. That said, while this proposal is not a marked departure from previous years, we are still looking forward to a new year of ambitious programs and outreach and renewing connections with our neighbors here at Maple and Philadelphia avenues. Our mission statement is pretty evergreen. It has remained unchanged since at least 1995. And it reads that "We enhance the quality of life in Tacoma Park by responding to and inspiring the literacy, literary, educational, and informational needs of a diverse community. The library provides and promotes up-to-date resources, collections, and referrals that match community interests, promote literacy and learning, nurture a love of books and stories, and present a broad range of views within inviting and safe environment." The library also operates the Computer Learning Center, providing access to the digital world for everybody. So this is not an exhaustive list of what we do, but it captures our primary services, beginning with circulation and reference, the public side of which is at our service desk, where we check books, audiobooks, hotspots, and Chromebooks in and out for patrons. It's also where we provide the majority of readers' advisory, which is helping to match people with relevant and interesting books. Information literacy, where we help patrons better understand how to critically evaluate information for trustworthiness in a world where that goalpost is constantly moving. And also research and instruction, so how to search for and access good information sources for the patrons' chosen topics. Before books make it out onto the shelves, there is a lot that happens behind the scenes, beginning with collection development itself or selecting titles and books for circulation. Criteria used in selection includes a literary or journalistic merit, cost, use and demand, format, available space, balance and points of view, and scope of the collections generally based on the library's mission. So there's a lot that goes into something before we even procure it. It's also an area in which we consider our complementary role to a county that has a countywide library system. We aim to provide access to books of special interest to Tacoma Park patrons, and we source them from some of the usual library distributors, but also from local bookstores like People's Book here in Tacoma Park and specialty bookstores with whom we've built relationships, like the bookstore that we've been working with in Argentina to help us acquire a lot of titles in Spanish that are unique to the DMV area. And once we have the books here, they go to the staff and technical services who catalog them to make them discoverable in catalog searches, and then they process them, so the books are durable enough to be checked out. While books are our brand, we do a lot more than books. We also offer programs for all ages that are free of cost and do not require a library card to attend. We have regularly scheduled programs like Neighborhood Circle Time and Canta Juego for children, Chess for Families, and Crochet and Cosies for all ages. We also have several special programs throughout the year, some of which have been running for more than 20 years, like the Winter Solstice and Favorite Poem Night, which is coming up on April 29th. And some are newer, like Dia de los Niños, which is a multilingual program we've done for three years now and which began as a Latin American celebration of childhood literacy. We partner with a lot of different organizations in and near Tacoma Park. Our Friends of the Tacoma Park Maryland Library Group make many of the programs that I just mentioned possible with their fundraising, and we're very lucky to have them. Historic Tacoma has been keeping our local history collection safe during construction, and we are doing a program with them in May for National Preservation Week. We are a regular presence at the Crossroads Farmers Market, and we love working with the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. We work with MCPs regularly throughout the school year, and I wish I had time to recognize all of our partners because they are all integral to extending our outreach into the community, and there's so much mutual benefit found in those relationships. Our Computer Learning Center is a crucial component to our services, and it's where we navigate the digital divide at its most stark. Staff in the Computer Center regularly help patrons sign up for their first email accounts, navigate two-factor authentication, print documents, apply for jobs, and access workforce development resources. Our machines are Linux-based, and they utilize open-source software to be cost-effective while also providing stringent security and offering most-in-demand functions. Most libraries are seeing more people bringing their personal devices in with them. We're not an exception to that. We help troubleshoot laptops, tablets, phones every day, the full spectrum of operating systems. Our Computer Center staff regularly inspire some really lovely feedback from patrons. So that was kind of a highlight reel of what we do, and here are all of the people carrying out those services. We're a lean team of 11.76 FTEs, and we are not requesting additional FTEs in fiscal year 26. We have six staff who have professional librarian titles, and some of our associates also have masters in library science degrees. The team as a whole offers a diverse and interesting collection of expertise that keeps our programs engaging in conversation at the circulation. that keeps our programs engaging and conversation at the circulation desk very lively. So again, this is not an exhaustive list of our fiscal year 25 year-to-date successes, but I did want to highlight items in a few areas. We onboarded Anatahada as our new part-time youth services librarian this year. She's hit the ground running. She recently completed a master of science in library and information science at Simmons University with coursework and a practicum focused on children and teen librarianship. She is also bringing in expertise in training, navigating changes within organizations, and creating new systems, which is going to be a very valuable asset as the library transitions into a new facility. We're entering year four of our partnership with the Crossroads Farmers Market. This summer, we will be doing our third annual free bilingual book giveaway and continue a fourth year of yard dramas, thanks to funding from the Maryland State Arts Council. This is the third year we have offered after-school library programs at Tacoma Park Middle School. We wanted to make sure to keep a footprint over here near Maple and Philadelphia avenues while we have been based out of Ward 6, and that was a part of that. The Friends of the Tacoma Park Maryland Library continued to raise funds and covered approximately half of our programming expenses. Fiscal year to date, the library staff, this was as of the 11th, the library staff facilitated 164 programs attended by 3,024 people of all ages. Our Crochet and Cosies program has resulted in completing at least 247, probably 250 by now, I'm sure, handmade items, including hats and baby blankets, mittens and scarves. And those have been donated to local nonprofits, including Tommy's Pantry and Shepherd's Table. Residents have interacted with us all over town, from Monster Bash to the Street Festival to National Night Out, and we're trying to make it to every ward at least once a year. And of course, the biggest project that we have in the works is the Library and Community Center redevelopment project, which we are close to completing, and we are excited to welcome residents into a new facility in fiscal year 26. So on to the numbers. This is the proposed revenue for fiscal year 26, which reflects minimal adjustments from an operational perspective as part of our proposed maintenance of effort. 1,483,831 is budgeted from the general fund. This is about a 4% increase of about 56,000. The general fund represents about 90% of our projected funding. The library aid from the county figure is based on the actual amount received last year, which was 172,000. We anticipated about a 7% increase based on past trends, which comes to about 184,000, and that's the figure that was in the budget book originally. That said, when the county released their proposed fiscal year 26 budget last week, that figure was higher than our estimate at 221,000. It was a welcome surprise, but it is not a number that I take for granted until it's approved by the county council. And I'm going to be attending the work session where it will be discussed to support the new figure and advocate for increased funding consideration for the library. There is a line item for revenue for fines and fees, but I do want to highlight that fines and fees are not really a stable or predictable source of revenue, and the proposed amount reflects that. About $1,250 is budgeted for fines and fees. And while we have not been assessing overdue fines since the beginning of the pandemic, we do charge for items that patrons lose or damage beyond repair. And that $1,250 amount really represents item replacement costs more than fines and fees. And that number could go up or down. It just kind of depends on how people are actually interacting with us. As for our proposed expenditures, again, minimal change. We propose department expenditures of 1,669,000, which is a 4% increase from fiscal year 25. Increases in both divisions are driven by wage and fringe benefit increases as personnel costs represent the vast majority of our expenses. Our function, as you've seen it so far, is very people-driven. That said, there are some increased operating expenditures proposed, representing an 8% increase for a total of $187,364. There are two primary drivers for that increase, the first of which is regular increases for access to subscription resources. Those are something that libraries bake in every year as our vendors make planned increases. But that includes services like Pronunciator for language learning, ebooks and online read-alongs through Tumble Books, and academic research through National Geographic, EBSCO, Gale, Encyclopedia Britannica, and several others. The second increase proposed is an annual, or sorry, not annual, additional $5,000 for our programs and outreach line item to provide additional programs in the new library and computer learning center facilities. As we come back to Philadelphia Avenue and get accustomed to new usage patterns and visitors, we believe it would be beneficial to have the added flexibility those funds would provide for responsive, relevant, and engaging programs for everyone who visits. We have no requests currently for fiscal year 26, which is the first since I have been here. It's very exciting. We expect the remainder of construction expenses to be made in fiscal year 25. And in closing, I'll highlight a few challenges and opportunities that we've identified. Reopening the new permanent library facilities is a really exciting undertaking, and it's also going to require a lot of adaptability on the part of the staff. So we're planning for that pretty early on and trying to anticipate what we can while giving ourselves a little room to breathe and respond to the unexpected. Information literacy really is a moving target these days, and teaching this in an age of AI in particular gets more and more complicated. But we are still committed to helping patrons know how to critically evaluate information for truthfulness, bias, and with regards to AI, environmental sustainability as well. We also recognize the challenging economic outlook and plan to rise to whatever occasion pans out by prioritizing connecting with residents so that they know where to turn if they're adversely impacted by economic events and policies, including workforce development resources, lifelong learning, a safe place to work, entertainment and enrichment through free programs and books, and a lot more than that. But we want to live up to the idea of being a community anchor. And with that, I can take questions.
Thank you so much, and I am looking forward to the day when we can cut the ribbon on the new library. Do we have any questions? Councilmember DeBala?
Thank you for this presentation and showing us what it's going. And I just, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but just so everybody else hears it. All the costs associated with moving from the current location to the new location, that's covered in the budget for the library construction, which is in this fiscal year.
Correct.
The money. Okay.
Yes.
So this is, once you get there, how you run the library.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lamb?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I just wanted to thank you for the very detailed and helpful analysis that you did of feasibility of having a satellite library. It was a sad answer for the upcoming fiscal year at least, but I think that the fact that you were able to dissect it so carefully and estimate the potential cost was very helpful to us in determining viability. So appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm glad it was helpful. I definitely wanted to make sure that if we were going to do it, that everything was considered ahead of time.
Councilmember Hanzel?
Just make a quick comment. I thought this was a great presentation. Don't have too many, don't really have any questions, actually. Really appreciate how much work you've had to do over the last several years to get all this moving into place, and I'm excited about the new library. I just want to thank you for calling out especially that you'll be working to get events in each and every ward. As you know, continue to say drum the same drum, but I would be delighted, once you get all settled and some months have passed, to re-engage with you on how we might better engage Ward 5 to feel like they're getting to really enjoy, you know, the new services and the fact that you're back in a stable situation. We loved it when you guys came out to Totally Fraser Park the one time, and I think it's a nice space to, you know, continue exploring. Thank you.
Definitely.
Councilmember Westlaw?
Much paper. Thank you for the wonderful presentation. I have a very small, technical kind of question. In your presentation, you say the 5,000 increase in programs and outreach. And I have the budget book here, and where is that? Because I don't see a programs and outreach line item. Because I was looking to see one going from up by 5K.
I think that it's all under like the operational expenses.
Okay.
It is a separate account that we draw from.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear because I, Councilmember Westlaw, you got my question. So it would mean that the $5,000 would be part of the 187,000 operating expenditures that's in the budget.
Yes.
And what you're doing in this presentation is breaking down what that 8% increase, you know, basically the rationale for that 8% increase.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Michalov?
I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. And as a teacher, I really appreciate that you've been getting out into schools and also just more broadly getting out throughout the community as a council member. That's it.
Thank you.
Well, this has been relatively painless, so thank you so much. Real quick question, because I feel like we're going to see a lot of 4% increases in terms of department expenditures. And I guess this question is for city management. Does that just basically account for increase in labor costs and overall just our inflationary measure for a lot of departments? Because I feel like we're going to see this quite a bit when we're just maintaining the steady state but having to acknowledge that there's going to be a moderate increase in costs.
Yes, that percentage is kind of an average, and we have some inflationary impacts a lot higher than 4%, some that are lower. But key components proportionately include wages, benefits, health insurance, and a number of things that we have that's expensive. Pretty much across the board on services and commodities, various other things that we have to purchase during the course of this year.
Thank you so much. All right. Well, thank you so much, Director Jones, for all of the work that you're doing on our library and the wonderful programming that your office provides.
Thank you.
All right. Main event, Housing and Community Development Department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Debbie McNally here with the Housing and Community Development Department. I'm very excited tonight to present about our proposed FY '26 budget. So our mission is primarily around our built environment and preserving and enhancing Tacoma Park's existing built environment. We are tasked with revitalizing our commercial and residential neighborhoods, ensuring safe, decent, affordable housing throughout the city, encouraging and supporting reinvestment within the city, and enriching the lives of our residents through arts and humanities programming. We're a similarly sized department to the library, a little bit bigger. We have 13.8 FTEs. That is a reduction from FY '25 of about 0.45 FTEs. We lost our special projects coordinator, but that was slightly offset. We had a slight increase in the number of hours for our arts and humanities coordinator. You may notice that the Economic Development Division is no longer one of the kind of divisions under the director. It's being moved under Planning, which will now be Planning and Economic Development, and there will be an Economic Development Specialist that will be reporting to the Planning Manager there. And that is a change this year that we are proposing. And then we also, from the previous fiscal year, now have a deputy director position. So there's a slight decrease in FTEs, no increase in FTEs. Our revenue sources primarily come from our rental licensing fees. So this is a per-unit fee for all licensed long-term rentals in the city of Tacoma Park. We're projecting in FY '26 to collect a little over $400,000 in rental licensing fees, and that is our primary revenue source. Our other revenue sources include permits and registration fees around some of our kind of outdoor sidewalk vendor permits, as well as owner-occupied group home registrations. These are a very small number and are actually not collected in their kind of own categorization. They're kind of collected as miscellaneous revenue. We do collect citations. These numbers go up and down. They're issued for violations of the city code, primarily by our housing and code enforcement staff. And we're projecting to issue about $7,000 worth of citations next year. So our proposed operating budget is a little under $2.7 million, and that is spread amongst our divisions. Our largest expenditures are in our housing division and followed by our administration. Most of our operating budget is personnel and wages, with a lot of our programming being supported through grant funding. One thing to bring up really quick is I know in the budget books there is a big increase, and part of that is our department was particularly used for ARPA funding. And in particular, operating funds were moved over into ARPA for the past couple of years, and they are now moving back into our general fund. There's also vacancies that have kind of historically been in the department over the past couple of years. So at the bottom, you see at the table there is looking at that FY '25 original budget instead of the projected budget. And what you see is a good chunk of that really is that DHCA rental licensing contract. We contract out to the county for our rental licensing inspections, and they have a team of staff members that do that. They presented earlier this year on the program. And so most of that funding is really coming back from that ARPA fund. We also have had a number of vacancies over the past few years. For example, our Economic Development Manager position, which is now our Economic Development Specialist position, has been open for a couple of previous fiscal years. And that is one of the reasons why we proposed and moved it to an Economic Development Specialist position. We also had a planner position that was vacant. That is now becoming the deputy director position. And then we previously in FY '24 had a housing program specialist position that was open. In this fiscal year, we've had a number of different positions opening, including our director position that has been filled as an acting director by our housing manager and planning manager, which has created vacancies in that department. So that has been a big portion of why the projected budget is so much higher than, or it is, the proposed budget is higher than the projected budget. The other portion is ARPA, which is our DHCA contract and some of our staff salaries that were moved over as part of those allocations. Had a lot of work going on in the department. So in FY '24 and '25, we adopted new tax credits aimed at incentivizing the production of new rental housing and preserving our existing affordable housing. We've done upgrades to our existing platforms to monitor and to oversee and manage our rental licenses. So we rolled out our new platform this December. We also have had a lot of progress with our programming. I'm really pleased with the work our Tenant Opportunity Purchase Program has had in helping residents decide the fate of their buildings with 112 Lee Avenue and 7520 Maple going through that program. We have new administrative regulations on sidewalk and traffic calming, which are going to be talked about later tonight. And we continue to have very strong attendance at our Tacoma Arts performances. I know they're a big hit among residents and people from outside the city as well who come for the performances. come for the performances. We always see a wonderful turnout for our bike events and our safe routes to schools. And we've been able to expand some of our programming as well, including our Open for Business and Facade Improvement Grants, which have helped some of our new local businesses and reinvigorate some of our existing commercial businesses. And then our Community Quality of Life and Food insecurity grants, which have provided critical funds to nonprofit organizations within the city for addressing the needs of our residents. So I'll start by breaking it down by divisions, and I'll be moving through it quickly, so I apologize. Our administrative division provides kind of initial triage for people coming in, and they also provide kind of the oversight of the department, and they are kind of the main point of first contact for residents. This also houses our grants manager positions, so they collaborate closely with the other city departments to identify, apply for, and manage grants for the city. This personnel is the largest portion of this department, and the increase is primarily driven by the creation of that new deputy director position. This is a transfer of an FTE from the previous planner position. It is not a new FTE. Most of the non-personnel costs are direct department operations, so this is computers, laptops, equipment, that sort of thing. Our Planning and Economic Development Division is kind of the combination now of both of our different divisions previously. So they oversee our development review process for the city. They lead our efforts related to city planning and transportation planning, and they coordinate with our local stakeholders, including the county, the state, on land use and right-of-way issues. We work very closely with Public Works on a number of different projects, including the traffic calming and sidewalks. We implement a number of community events around multimodal transportation, so overseeing our Safe Routes to School program, as well as our Bike to School work. And then additionally, we also collaborate with local business associations to support local businesses within the city and provide data analysis and mapping for city projects. So starting with economic development, we're seeing a slight reduction there, primarily through the conversion of the economic development manager position. We are continuing our support for our business associations that are the three within the city, and then providing pre-development funds for housing and underutilized parcels to help examine whether or not there can be housing added to them or spark redevelopment. Our Planning Division is also getting a reduction from FY '25 from the Planning Division. A lot of this budget is around our kind of work within the community, so looking at streetscape improvements, city matching for our Safe Routes to School program, and then outreach around bike month. Most of planning's kind of operating funds are done through grant awards through the CIP. So planning in particular goes out and gets a number of grants on our bikeways programs, such as the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, the New Avenue Bikeways Design, and the Metropolitan Branch Trail Design Work. So you'll see more of kind of their projects later on as we talk about the CIP and our grant revenue. Our Arts and Humanities Division is a division of one, which organize and hosts our Tacoma Park Art Series, which is between 10 and 15 events per year. They're in charge of installation of public art across the city. That's roughly one major installation per year. They staff the Arts and Humanities Committee, and they collaborate with local artist groups to support local artists, including working to support our poet laureate. Most of their budget is the Arts and Humanities Coordinator, who goes out and applies for grant funds for a lot of their work, including some of their arts installation projects. But we do put in some funding for performance honorariums. Typically, they're around $500 per performance, and then some money for additional art installations. Our Housing Division. So this division has a lot of different roles. One is landlord-tenant mediation and client intake. They oversee our rental licensing program and provide technical assistance to landlords around city laws. They oversee our rent stabilization program and do enforcement around that. They staff the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs, which is our landlord-tenant court. They oversee the city's tenant opportunity to purchase program and other housing programs, such as the Emergency Assistance Program, and they help develop additional housing policies and programs. This is the largest budget in our department. A large part of that, like I mentioned earlier, is the increase bringing back the DHCA rental inspection contract. We also have an additional $85,000 in the budget to conduct a policy analysis and develop recommendations to improve the city's rent stabilization program. This is put in in the event that council directs staff to look at that rent stabilization policy. We've heard from both landlords, members of council, and the public that there could be improvements to rent stabilization. As part of that, we would need additional assistance to help with that. It's a complicated process. There's a lot of jurisdictions out there doing different things, and it is a very finicky interconnected web of different pieces to it, such as fair return petitions, capital improvements, the amount of increases, new construction. And so what we're looking at really is less the idea of rent stabilization itself and more our specific policies and how we can improve them. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, but I also want to talk about some of our other programs, which include funding for our fair return petitions. So this is to have an accounting firm on staff to evaluate those petitions as they come in. It's a lot of paperwork, and in particular, a number of financial reports that need to be done by an unbiased third party. We have funding for tenant organizational assistance, trying to piggyback and collaborate with the county to help with that process. And then funding for our outreach, which includes landlord forums, tenant association meetings, and then translation and outreach materials. We try to update our Housing Resources Guide, which has a number of different resources, mostly relating to housing, but also connecting to other partner programs that provide assistance to residents both in the county and Tacoma Park. And so we try to make these materials available, not just in English, but in Spanish and Amharic as well. We also have our tax credit implementation. So we have that approved resolution, and we are working through kind of the program details that we'll be bringing to council for review and discussion with the goal of starting those tax credits in FY '27. So a little bit about the tentative timeline. If in May 2025, we'd plan to have a work session with council on a project scope and a resolution directing staff to move forward with the review. The idea would be then to release an RFP with that scope in June of this year, and then bring forward a consultant in the summer for approval by council. And then moving forward into the fall, begin outreach and review of best practices with a presentation on key findings and work sessions on these recommendations in the spring of 2026, with the potential for the adoption of any ordinance or changes sometime in April or May of 2026. It's a pretty aggressive timeline, so it would require kind of a fair amount of help. Our Code Enforcement Division is remaining mostly stable. They are focused on our community-wide enforcement of the property maintenance code for single-family dwellings, as well as our businesses. They refer and collaborate with our county and state agencies, and they do education work around our sustainable practices in anti-litter. So this includes anti-litter education, the enforcement of our Safe Grow Ordinance, and then also our plastic straw and plastic bag bans. Typically, in this, we budget about $30,000 a year for abatement work. This is work that's done by the city if we cite an owner and the owner does not comply with a court order to abate the property. What we do in that case is we go out, we hire a contractor to do the repairs, and then we put a lien on the property. And that lien is collected when the property is either sold or if the property owner decides to pay it off early. All right. Moving on to some of our other funding sources that come from our interdepartmental funding, I'll just briefly note that we have a couple of reconciliation items around our Emergency Assistance Program and our Multifamily Building Improvement Program that'll be part of that reconciliation. This is ARPA funding that was moved over to the general fund because it was not going to be encumbered by the December 2024 deadline, and it is planned to be spent in FY '26. We have a number of different programs that we fund in these line items, including our Community Quality of Life Grant, our community event sponsorships. So this is for events such as Fourth of July and Juneteenth. We do have emergency assistance funding, and then our Crossroads Community Farmers Market. Our CIP budget generally falls into three categories. For this year, we have about $1.6 million. Most of them are from, most of the funding is coming from our special revenue fund, so these are grant, and that is kind of our first branch, which is externally funded capital projects that require a city match. Generally, it's an 80/20 split, so the grant covers 80% of the work. We have to pick up the tab for about 20%. So this includes projects like the Met Branch Trail and Maple Avenue Connectivity Project Design Project. We have annually reoccurring special revenue funds. That includes our community development block grants, as well as our program Open Space Funding, and these come from the county and then from the federal government and state government, respectively. And then we have some of our general fund capital projects. So this is the installation of bus shelters, the public space management plan, traffic studies, and then the recreation center redevelopment. So this is all of our CIP budget. I know it's a really small one. I've called out some of the projects, but some of them will be wrapping up in this coming FY '26, such as our Met Branch Trail project, which is the design of the Met Branch Trail. The next step would be then to go after funding for the construction of it. For those who don't know, that's the bike and pedestrian path that runs from Montgomery County down into DC, and so we have about a mile-long portion of it. So a large part of our funding is through grant funding. So $1.7 million is our projected grant revenue for FY '26, and this is everything from our Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Fund, Program Open Space, New Avenue Bikeways. This will likely continue to change throughout the year as we apply for funds, as we spend down funds, but this is what we're anticipating at the moment. So building on the council priorities, we have a number of different projects that are aiming to meet the priorities listed by council, so building partnerships to expand affordable housing options and improve housing conditions. We're continuing to work on and advocate for policies related to tenants' rights. That includes the second year of our rental insurance rebate pilot program. We just launched that this February, and we're kind of looking at what's happening at the moment and kind of looking at changes to make that a better way to encourage renters to pick up renters' insurance, as it's a great way to provide safety in the event of a fire, flood, or other disaster. We also want to be funding tenant organization and legal assistance. We also want to continue to push forward towards Vision Zero with traffic studies, existing and right-of-way planning grants and matches. And so that's our work under the design of bikeways and pedestrian routes, including the New Avenue Bikeway and Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, the implementation of our sidewalk and traffic calming projects through the administrative regulations that we'll be discussing a little bit later tonight, and then reviewing sections of the housing code, such as rent stabilization. So there are some challenges that we're aiming to address. We've been a department that's had a fair amount of turnover in the past couple of years, and we're hoping that that does not continue into FY '26, so that we can be fully staffed up to meet our mission. The loss of ARPA funds or the ending of kind of ARPA's encumbrances is something that the department was heavily involved in, and so we are retooling and getting more creative going forward in how we're going to meet our mission with the end of ARPA funds and some of our kind of programs that are ending, including our Open for Business Grants and Facade Improvement Grants, which were solely funded through ARPA. So our goal is to expand tools to encourage good stewardship of rental units while also promoting reinvestment. So starting with not only the incentives that were laid out in tax credits, but also looking at ways that we can update our own city code regarding troubled property enforcement and other policy tools, and then also looking at our Housing Reserve Fund and how we should be spending that funding through guidelines. We want to support our local business through challenging times. We know that the purple line is a major impact on our local businesses, and so we want to be particularly sensitive to that and work with our partners, such as the Crossroads Development Authority and Long Branch Business League, to support our businesses and help them thrive. We want to continue to maintain a clean, safe, and attractive city and look at kind of ways to better address resident complaints to code enforcement, but then also find additional funding streams for low-income and senior residents who need, who have potential code violations. And then planning for a truly multimodal city through traffic studies and our right-of-way construction. So all of that was a lot. To wrap up, we're going to continue going after grants to help fund these programs. We'll be getting fully staffed up. We have a number of postings that we're actively hiring for to continue to pursue the department's goals, and we will be working to kind of implement our current tools and add on these processes, such as the administrative regulations around traffic calming and sidewalks going forward. So thank you for all of that. I cannot take any questions.
Thank you so much. And all of the work that the HCD staff does, I feel like we are always relying on HCD to do some of the important work in the city. Just checking with my colleagues, is there any questions? Councilmember Westside?
I have two, so I'm trying to debate which one to do first. So you can, someone else can go first.
Councilmember Schlegel?
I'll go ahead and throw in one and be done. One and done. Assistant Director McNally, thank you for the presentation, and I wanted to ask about the housing policy study, or the rent stabilization review, as it might be called. And what is your department's understanding right now of the identified problems with the current rent stabilization program? Or put differently, what are the objectives of this review?
So I think it depends on who you talk to, what the issue is with rent stabilization. I think our goal in this review is looking at where is the right cutoff for assisting our small mom-and-pop landlords and making sure that they're able to properly invest in these buildings, while at the same time not being overly relaxing to the kind of larger-scale landlords and finding that right balance. And there's a few kind of pieces to that. One thing that gets brought up is there are a few owner-occupied multifamily buildings where an individual lives in one of the units, and they have more than a single rented unit, which puts them into rent. which puts them into rent stabilization, and some of them have come in and run into difficulties and have expressed frustration with that, saying that, you know, this is their home, and at the same time, they're having a really hard time kind of balancing being in a very unique situation. We also have a number of very technical policies around utility transfers, capital improvements, and so there's a number of different factors that we would be looking at. So it's hard to say it's just one thing, and this is one of the reasons why we're proposing kind of having someone with expertise to help us with this, because it is a number of different factors, and they all kind of work in tandem with each other.
Council, sorry, City Manager Desperito?
Yes, thank you. In addition to what Devin said, part of the purpose of having these funds is to provide some capacity for the mayor council once you've generated questions and desire for additional information. I think what will be, I would propose to be important would be some preliminary conversations on the part of mayor council, rather than, we can imagine on the staff side, some of the questions. Devin addressed a few of those, but before any type of use of a consultant would be contemplated, I think it would be very important for staff to hear from the mayor and council and the community as to what else do we want to know and learn about this subject? Where do we need some additional expertise? Where could we get some independent advice and so forth? So for the time being, I wouldn't say we could even completely define the use, but we anticipate and want to provide the capacity to the mayor council to have a tool with which to obtain that additional information that will help facilitate any conversations, receiving any decisions. Mayor Council with me.
Thank you. And I do want to piggyback off of that, and I appreciate staff really working through a proposed timeline for how we would need to be able to address rent stabilization policies. And while I recognize this is an aggressive timeline, I think it is really, really, really important for this city for us to really do our due diligence and work hard to try to address the various aspects of our rent stabilization policies. As I've mentioned before, we are one entity within an ecosystem of other communities, Montgomery County, Prince George's County. There are other communities that have adopted rent stabilization laws, and we haven't, when have we ever updated or reviewed our rent stabilization law?
Our last major overhaul, I understand, was in 2007.
Okay. So we're looking at about, what, 15, 18 years? And in that time, there's just been a lot of change that has occurred. I will just say for folks on council that are not familiar, one of the big things that came up with Good Cause this time around was preemption around vacancy control, which relates to the county's rent stabilization law, and it would be helpful for us to have a firm understanding of our vacancy control policies and what they mean, so, and being able to do our due diligence in that regard as well. So I am a strong proponent of us investing in this activity, because I think it's going to be really critical in terms of moving the city's housing goals forward. Councilmember Westwood?
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna squeeze in my one, which is about the 85K for the consultant, which, and this is my first time, I can't find where that is in the budget, but that's for another time. My actual question, I recently, the last couple of days, I've been trying to wrap my arms around what nonprofits we give grants to, as well as probably what funds we have to give to individual residents. So given that the public comments last week, this week, and I assume will continue, it's about a lot of organizations and people in need. And I had a really hard time and don't think I got a clear answer on what are the organizations and then the structure of, if it's a food insecurity grant or a community quality of living grant, I was, and I wonder, and this might be more of a, if there is a way to pull that together into some kind of written document during this budget process? I wonder if there's some way to get a better handle on that, to know who we support.
Yeah, so...
And, sorry, and not like the individual people. Like, I guess I'm like, we have X amount for tax credit assistance, right? But then here's the 10 nonprofits we gave $5,000 to, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so in terms of our kind of like support for nonprofits, it's done through our community quality of life grant and our, what will be going away and at the end of this year, our food insecurity grant that was started through ARPA funding. That's awarded, well, recommended to council by the Grants Review Committee, and then staff through our grants manager. For the awards, and then a quick note on that is, we will be bringing forward the recommendations as part of the Grant Review Committee's kind of review of different awardees. So it changes year to year technically, depending on who gets awarded.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I have got two questions, but I'm gonna start the one, and this might be, you're the, might be the wrong person I'm posing it to. Where is the Community Connectors Program? Is that within HCD, or is that one of...
So that is not within HCD.
Okay, then I will ask you my other question. You noted a very modest amount of money, like $1,000 or less, coming from permits and fees, and I know that other municipalities, I believe Rockville is one of them, have actually developed permitting or fee program for streeteries, which is priced at a very, very different level from where we are, and I'm wondering whether, at this point, now that we have established businesses, whether it's something that was under consideration at all in the processing? You don't mention that at all, and I was curious what the thinking was there.
Yes, so what I will say is, our previous director, Ira Cowler, one of the things he left on his to-do list was to talk about those fees. It is something that's in the code. I think part of the difficulty behind it is we haven't had anyone in the economic development position to really go about implementing that, and it's something that's high on our priority list, and we would like to get to that.
Councilmember Honsa?
That gets right to my question, which is, can you just speak a little bit to how you think this new proposed FTE structure of the economic specialist and the deputy director is going to help us advance and conduct economic development in the way that we had envisaged previously under the previous structure, but, you know, we just didn't have the positions filled? And that's coming from a place where I consider economic development to be extremely important over the next several years. Thank you.
Absolutely. So part of this conversation began prior to my coming on as the acting director. One of the challenges we had with hiring an economic development manager is the city sits in a tricky position in terms of hiring someone who has a good amount of knowledge about economic development, but still can work on the ground with local businesses. It's a little bit of a split vision. We don't have, we are a mostly built-out city. We don't have a terrible amount of undeveloped vacant greenfield parcels that would be attractive for, say, a larger business, but we have, you know, a few of those opportunity sites that do exist. But at the same time, we have a number of businesses that sit outside of our business associations that do need, you know, the same amount of attention and, you know, check-in that we would want to give for all of our businesses across the city. And so the org structure proposed kind of splits some of that duty between the deputy director and the economic development specialist. And partially, this is looking at the organization, the department as a whole, and how we can work across divisions and work collaboratively together. And so a lot of the economic development specialist's work will be a lot of day-to-day working with businesses, providing some of that kind of one-on-one touch, but then also supporting kind of some of these larger visions, data analysis work that we do need across the department. The deputy director position will work with the director on some of these higher-profile real estate pieces that require kind of that higher-level individual who has experience with some of these complexities, with the ability to sit down with outside stakeholders, such as local businesses. And so great examples of this include the recreation center, some of the work around the Junction Lot in terms of leasing these spaces, where you need someone who has kind of some of that more complex project work. And so that's kind of the reasoning why this position was split up.
I could also add that I envision a greater role for the city manager's office, both in economic development, in part because of the, I say, assembled experience that David and I, and soon Asmara joining us, have. And besides that, I think that there's oftentimes a desire, particularly for maybe larger, more ambitious project ideas, to be vetted at, maybe initially at the city manager office level, and so we're going to be involved regardless. I think that occurred before I was here, and this is just kind of an acknowledgement, a recognition that there are numerous folks in the organization that can work at economic development. And it has been frustrating for a year and a half. We have got a handful of applications for that economic developer position at the manager level, and they weren't particularly, you know, meeting the level of qualifications that we were looking for. We thought, in the interest of all the things that Devin has said, but also the fact that we really, truly do need to get somebody on board to help us, that we may have more success recruiting a specialist rather than a manager for that position.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Because we are at time. I would like to ask, can you just give us a quick overview? Because we're hearing a lot of questions regarding the $160,000 for the recreation center. Can you just give us a quick little summary of what those funds are actually going to go for?
So, at the moment, we were leveraging a grant from the state to do some of that kind of initial pre-development work, and a lot of that is studies. So an appraisal of the property, getting a survey of the site, a capital needs assessment of the current facility, and an environmental site assessment, which are all kind of the basic preparatory work. We envision using a small portion of that funding for, to extend the work of some of that, these studies, but for kind of the majority of these fundings, we would need additional direction from council in terms of pursuing any, like, significant use of the funds.
And you had mentioned that we had some grant funds, so I just want to confirm kind of how the breakdown of the funds for the $160,000, are those completely general funds, or...
They are completely general fund now. They were formerly ARPA dollars.
Okay. So just again, so that everybody understands what the prior council approved, which was, we got to the point of the year where we had to make sure that any ARPA dollars were able to be obligated and spent within the regulatory timelines. And so in order to make sure that the prior council was able to do that, Mr. Boda went through and identified projects that basically could be, meet the requirements of ARPA, but were on a more expedited timeline, and the prior council basically did a money swap. He said, okay, these, this bucket of projects are ARPA allowed, and so what we're gonna do is make sure that we're gonna use the ARPA dollars to fund those in the general fund, all right, from the general fund. And then that freed up the money that we had in the general fund, that we were saying, hey, we're gonna use these funds now, they're gonna be in the general fund for the next fiscal year. We'll use these funds to further those ARPA projects that weren't able to be completed because of the mandates. So there were monies that were put to the side, or a decision from the prior council to make sure that those monies were kind of freed up, but making sure that we didn't lose sight of what the original intent of those funds were supposed to be for. So I just want to make sure that we kind of give folks a little bit of history on that. Councilmember DeBala?
And along those lines, so the original idea of the $160,000 was to leverage the state money.
Correct.
Could you say something about the state money? How much it is, what was done with it?
Yeah, so the state grant, Ned Grant, was originally for $145,000. We have spent about $12,000 of that. The grant is coming due at the end of June. A large part of this is because, and we can provide more information because there is a long timeline, we released an RFP for the project back in 2022. We got two kind of complete responses, and when those were evaluated, there was a funding gap. We estimated anywhere from $10 to $15 million for the rec center itself, which was part of kind of the requirement of the project. And at that point, the council decided to not move forward with either of the responses. And so as a result, the kind of grant was put to the side and staff moved forward with kind of studies that we could do in that time period that would still be useful if any other redevelopment or use was considered further along down the line, but we weren't able to use the majority of the funds.
State funds.
The state funds.
Correct.
Because they were aimed at development, not studies.
They were aimed at development, so we were able to do some of the study work, but the additional funding would have been for architectural drawings, engineering, that sort of stuff.
Right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming out tonight. And so next, we have, I believe we're doing public work, Public Works Department and so on.
Can I ask you a quick question, Madam Mayor? So what we just, that explanation was just given, so the money that is in the recreation center bucket, could it hypothetically be spent for something other than actual bricks and mortar at that site, such as, or building a new building? What could it be used for fixing the building? We just heard that part of the study would be an assessment of the current building if we were trying to keep that building going. While we figure out how the building doing, could we use the money for that?
Mr. Eubanks? Because I know we've gone down this path a lot.
The technical answer is yes, however, there is no staff recommendation for the long-term use of that building. The needs assessment is to help us understand in the interim what might be necessary to keep it going until we have an idea, concept of what we want to do long-term. So the 160 is just general fund money right now, so it could be used however council decides to use it. However, what council decided when we made that swap of ARPA money and general fund money is that those dollars now sitting in an undersigned reserve will be used to further the already identified ARPA project. So unless council determines amongst council and the... So unless council determines amongst council and direct staff that 160 is going to be used for recreation.
Just, I thought the question was about the original $145,000 Ned Grant that was going to evaporate in June. Whether any of that could be used for refurbishments, short term?
Right. So it's 175. And that is, my understanding is it's not available for that type of use. The 160 could be available for the type of uses that you're describing. The 175 would not be as far as we're aware.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, we're going to move to Public Works Department and Stormwater.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Jumping right in. Mission of the Public Works Department, largely slave customer service. We serve both internal customers through our facility maintenance, vehicle maintenance divisions, and external customers through our collection services, right-of-way services, vegetation maintenance, city engineering, and sustainability. We are broken into nine divisions. Very briefly, mostly for those of you who may be less familiar with what all composes public works. We have an administration division, which does the, is the main point of contact for service requests and coordinates special services, answers questions, is the public face of the department. We have building maintenance, which includes both facility maintenance as well as custodial service. We do provide full-time custodial service seven days a week, eight hours a day. We have a number of facilities that we serve. I've listed there some of the special projects that are included in the FY26 budget. A lot of internal renovation, dance floor, refinishing, some water fountain works, some lobby furniture, replacing the flooring in the teen room, and replacing the exterior doors on the rear of the community center. None of that was included in the current renovation project, and they are all in need of being done. Our equipment maintenance division, we provide maintenance for really over 87 vehicles that are in, within the city fleet, primarily public works, police vehicles, as well as public work vehicles and other department administrative vehicles. Eighty percent of the repair work that we do is in-house. We contract out for warranty work, maintenance, and large types of maintenance repairs. We also have a fueling station at Public Works for both gas and diesel, and we have to, we're fully within compliance of all the regulatory requirements for that. And our vehicle maintenance supervisor tracks vehicle condition, costs, as well as replacement, and keeps abreast of alternative fuel options. And is the lead author as we look each year at our vehicle replacement lists. And we'll dive into that at some point with the council, and you'll see the detailed list of information we provide when we're looking at vehicle replacement. Our right-of-way maintenance division takes care of parks, playgrounds, roadways, street signs, leaf collections, snow removal, and emergency response. That's a staff of seven people. Our solid waste collection, as you might expect, trash, recycling, food waste, yard waste. We service 3,800 households every week. That's a staff of 10 people. We also have a number of drop-off programs that are affiliated with this. Our annual household hazardous waste collection day, which is coming up the first Saturday in June, I believe it's June 7th. And we have the electronics, battery, motor oil, and drop-off programs for things like CFLs and Christmas lights. For those residents that have limited mobility, we do offer at-the-house collection. And residents, contact Public Works to make that request as they need it. Our sustainability is an office of one, does the public outreach and implementation of our climate action initiatives. Dory will be returning back to work after parental leave on March 31st. So very much looking forward to welcoming her back. Our vegetation maintenance division takes care of all the city gardens, turf, streetscapes, and stormwater facilities. They maintain over 195 sites in excess of 18 acres. We also have supplemental contractual maintenance that works with that division. So some of our high-visibility sites, the streetscape sites and some stormwater facilities, get six times a year contract maintenance that they oversee. The mowing operation takes place from April to May. We have 40 sites covering eight acres. This division also handles sidewalk clearing during winter storm events. So any public sidewalks, they're the folks that do that work. And there also are volunteer and community participation aspects. So they worked with community groups, environmental groups, and others for everything from invasive plant removal, new planting, open space maintenance. In 2025, they held seven events. And then they coordinate special things like the Monarch's Pledge that will be coming up here shortly. Our urban forest division is also a division of one. Pleased to report that our new urban forest manager, Rudy Del Sac, is coming on board next Monday, March 24th. So he replaces our outgoing Marty Frye. And will step into some very big shoes to fill when he comes on board. He's coming to us from DC Department of Transportation, urban forester there. So a wide breadth of experience in very similar kinds of conditions. Our tree Tacoma program has planted, I have more specifics in another slide, but that program is free trees on private property that's funded through the city's replanting requirements when a property owner does get a permit to remove a tree. And that's been a very successful program for expanding the number of tree plantings we have on private property throughout the city. We include a budget of $50,000 to supplement that program on an annual basis. And we do that in collaboration with Casey Trees, which not only provides the trees very well stocked and high nursery quality, but also does site visits and recommendations with property owners so they get the right tree, the right place, always native trees, and get a lot more information in helping to make those decisions. We also, for a couple of years now, have had an online permitting system, which has greatly reduced the administrative burden. So all our permits are online through GovQA, also known as MyTKPK. And it's greatly improved the applicant's experience and reduced administrative time. The urban forest manager's office also manages all tree pruning and removal on public space and oversees a program for tree removal assistance for low-income residents of the city. Typically includes $25,000 to $35,000 a year to provide assistance for those folks that can't afford to take a tree down that's hazardous on their property. And lastly, our engineering division oversees street restoration, traffic calming, and sidewalk improvement programs, also facilitates the remainder of the permits that we issue. Those are B4 driveways, dumpsters or pods, work in the right-of-way, or utility permits. They coordinate with utility companies to ensure restoration when they come through. And then they provide civil engineering support to other city departments as needed. Our organizational chart, we are basically, total full-time equivalents is 39.28. The actual permanent full-time staff is 37. You can see there the additional numbers are made up in seasonal labor hours. So both our vegetation maintenance and our leaf collection program hire seasonal labor to supplement the work of those divisions. Quick list, and this is by no means exhaustive, but some of the fast hits of things I was thinking of. Facility-wise, we have done a great number of facility repairs and improvements, both to this building and others, including continuing the LED transition of lighting within this building, upgrading a flooring in the police department's men's and women's locker room, upgraded the sinks and cabinets in the Zale room, replaced a window on that rear police stairwell, replaced a water heater in the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, and we've upgraded our sewer pit in the parking lot. And soon to be implementing a upgraded control system for all the heating and cooling units in the community center to improve building efficiency and comfort. On the vegetation maintenance front, we've restored and enhanced quite a few gardens through this past year. Renovations have been done at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, Bell Ziegler Park, and BY Morrison Park. Also done quite a few bioretention site restorations, including at Jackson Boyd, at Belford Place in Prince George's, and Lochne and Kirkland. We've completed the Stuart Armstrong Garden Pollinator Arboretum. That was actually a grant that our vegetation maintenance supervisor was able to successfully get through Pepco's Sustainable Maryland Grant. Also, last fall was the rollout of our Leaf Saver Program, which our vegetation maintenance supervisor and sustainability manager took the lead. So those residents that wanted to keep their leaves on their lawn were encouraged to pick up a Leaf Saver Program, both just to help promote and educate people as to that as an option, as well as make sure that their leaves weren't inadvertently collected during our vacuum leaf collection program. And lastly, we are in the stages of completing a project at Sligo Mill Road. We were successful in getting a $92,000 grant from the state that will greatly enhance stormwater management, hopefully aid in the reduction of litter and vagrancy that has take place on that dead-end road. We've removed half of the asphalt, reduced the pavement, added stormwater treatment, and will eventually have security cameras to help facilitate the enhancement of that space. On the urban forest front, I mentioned this earlier. We've planted 176 trees so far this year on private property, and about 90 trees that were planted this spring on public space. In terms of public space improvements, we've done some work at BY Morrison and replaced the concrete patio. We've also completed a removal of all the sections of brick sidewalk that were initially installed in 2011 through 2018 as tree save areas, places where we had sidewalk but couldn't put concrete back because of tree root impacts. So we've now removed all those bricks and replaced that with a perky pave product, which is a permeable surface that has far more longevity, wears better, and serves that purpose in a better way. We've also completed the Belford Place sidewalk, and we just finished a final design for both Darwin Avenue and Hodges Lane. We had the community meeting earlier this week. They will then go into the old process of the community vote, so that's currently ongoing through early April. Pending the outcome of that, they will be put into the construction queue. We have two other sidewalks that are currently in design, Chestnut Avenue and 13th Avenue. Our street resurfacing was greatly enhanced by full funding, full funding plus in the current fiscal year. Big appreciation to the city manager and council for authorizing those funds because we went to work. We anticipate about 100 and a half, 1.5 miles of roadways resurfaced, which is a big jump from what we'd been able to do before. And lastly, we upgraded decorative street lighting on Lee Avenue, where we had some decorative lights that had failed. Switching to our source of revenues, we do have several highway user fees associated with our program. Those are actually funds from the state. We're projecting a $94,000 increase over the amount that was provided in FY25. That number could change. We'll know, we'll let you know if we know. The state, the state makes those decisions. We also receive funds from the county in lieu of road maintenance. No change expected in the revenue received in FY26. We also charge for waste collection for those multifamily properties that opt for city collection. The city does provide collection for buildings that are 12 units and less. And so if an owner wants to avail themselves of city services, they're charged a fee for all but the first unit. So the first unit's no cost. Six-unit building would be five units of cost. And we collect about 100 multifamily buildings in that regard. We also have modest income from the sales of recyclable materials, as well as our mulch delivery services and bulk trash collection fees. The city charges $15 for three items for heavy pickup. A small amount of money from permit application fees, including those driveways, work in the right-of-way, dumpster, pod, and utility work permits. And our tree removal permits generate a more significant amount of money, including both the tree removal, as well as the tree impact assessment and tree protection plans. And again, those funds go directly into the tree fund, which are then used for tree planting in the future. This really gets a little bit tedious, but I will endeavor to make it make some sense. Our department expenditures are a little over $6 million, which is actually a decrease totally of just about 1% below the FY25 levels. In addition to this being a very much maintenance of budget for us, I'll show shortly some other ways in which the budget is, was impacted by adjustment of funds for certain types of expenditures. Our personnel costs are a little more than $4 million, an increase of 275,000, or 7% above the FY25 projected levels. Personnel costs represent 68% of the public works budget. You can see there the changes in wages, fringe overtime, and contractual labor. Our operating costs, almost $2 million, which is actually a decrease, a significant decrease, 329,000, or 14% lower. This is primarily due to a significant amount of costs being shifted to the red light camera. Those are the sustainable energy efficient grant programs. So those were previously funded in the general fund. And in the proposed FY26 budget, those funds are moved into the red light camera fund. Otherwise, most of the increases are fairly modest. Going on, this is kind of a division by division. And what I tried to do is associate a page number on your budget book with any of these, so you can link back to find them. I don't think I'll go through this, as I mentioned, fairly tedious, but you can see based on each division, each of our nine divisions, the change in non-personnel-related costs, largely just associated with modest increases, costs of supplies and materials, and contractual arrangements. Again, this emphasizes that change in the sustainability budget. And that is as a result of those grant funds being moved to the red light camera. Those include funds for energy efficiency for residential, commercial, multifamily, the EV charger, and the food waste pilot program. This budget includes $20,000, I believe, for, to do a pilot food waste program in multifamily buildings. And, let's see. The other significant decrease in the cost of our vegetation maintenance division for services and chargers, we got a much lower than we anticipated bid back for those contractual services. So it has reduced the cost of those for us, and we have a multi-year contract with that vendor. All right. Uh, nope, didn't move. We're frozen. Pushing that on the button? Battery's running low. Okay. Well, move it on to CIP. What I've done, and you have in the budget book there, these are between pages 249 and 255, the list of all the capital budget items associated with the Public Works Department. Some of those are self-evident, pickup truck replacements that met its useful life, a building maintenance van, leaf box, a leaf collection vacuum. We have one of two vehicle lifts that's scheduled for replacement. We have a diagnostic system for vehicle repairs. And the ADA compliance repairs to city sidewalks, there's $300,000 that have been put in the city in the general fund for sidewalk repair. This is a program that we city started in 2010. Over the course of years, we funded it more or less. We've gone through about 87% of the city sidewalks, so we still have a good chunk of sidewalks remaining that have to be made ADA compliance, to be consistent with the city's overall project. ADA compliance repairs to state roads, I've got that highlighted in yellow because the original budget, which was put together a month or two ago, included a $500,000 figure that has since been reduced to 150. It was originally proposed to be split between the general fund and the red light camera fund. As you'll see on my reconciliation slide, the funds proposed are now $150,000, all within the red light camera fund. The new sidewalk design and construction proposed $300,000 for those programs, and the source of funding is the red light camera. The traffic calming and pedestrian safety budget is $200,000. The source of funding is the general fund. And then we have a street light upgrade, which is basically to enable the city to respond if a resident requests additional street lighting, or we have identified a need for additional street lighting in the area due to insufficient lighting or crime issues. So it provides us with funds available that we can use to ask Pepco to upgrade the light and then pay for it. Going on through more CIP, the street rehabilitation budget proposed is 500,000, also included to come out of the red light camera fund. We have a list of streets that we've identified for resurfacing 2026. This may change, but based on, as I've mentioned before, we do a pavement condition index. These are the roadways that are identified as benefiting from a resurfacing based on their condition score. The public works facility design phase two, as you may recall, the city's public works facility underwent a major renovation that was completed in 2011, 2012. At that time, we were not able to do the full facility, and we knew then that we had a phase two. There are portions of the building that were not able to be renovated, including our vehicle maintenance base and our right of way division. In addition to those sections of the building, we also would like to see a wash base so we can clean our vehicles undercover and also a roof cover for our fuel pumps. There's also some sections of the building in that right of way and mechanic's bay that are not adequately heated or cooled, so we're hoping to, hoping to upgrade them. I guess this is my hoping to make improvements to the heating and air conditioning for staff offices. That is also subject to reconciliation when the original, original budget numbers were provided. I inadvertently wrote, put in $150,000. It should have been $285,000 to cover the cost of design development. And so that amount will be reflected in the reconciliation amount.
Daryl, excuse me, 263?
Choose, I might be mixing numbers. I had 263. Yes, sorry, 263. I am mixing numbers, sorry. Yeah, apologies. And I guess laptop's off, okay. Lastly, the police dispatch atrium renovation. That is another one that has, will see a slight change to the budget amount in the CIP based on a reconciliation amount. The original budget was originally put in at 1,004,000 to complete the planned renovation. That included 1,002,000 in the general fund and a balance of $200,000 in the special revenue fund based on the state appropriation the city had received. Since that time, we've identified additional costs that were not included in that, which was strictly a construction number. So we've added funding to include, and that's the 285,000 to include construction management, architectural oversight, and a percentage of contingency for that project. And I, see where I can find where I left off. I believe that is the end of my presentation. And I didn't know if you wanted to take public works questions and jump to storm or jump directly to stormwater?
So we're looking at about 26 minutes total left for, for this session. So I would say let's go ahead and move forward in the stormwater.
Okay. Right, so I guess.
Thank you for the page numbers.
What's that?
Thank you for the page numbers.
Oh, yes. In terms of, you have attached in your budget documents my PowerPoint presentation, so you'll be able to follow along. I feel bad reading from it for anybody watching and on videos as it's not shown. All righty. I'll jump right in. The mission of our stormwater management program is to provide stormwater management services, including construction, maintenance, repair, stormwater infrastructure, the pipes, inlets, outfalls, water quality improvement practices, such as bioretention facilities, permeable paper systems and filters. Additionally, the city initiates stream restoration programs to address degraded stream conditions. The city is mandated through our NPDES program, which stands for Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer Systems, hence the S4. It's a federal Clean Water Act requirement for any municipality such as ours that discharges water into, discharges runoff into bodies of water. So based on that permit, we have seven mandatory measures that we need to maintain. Those include public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction runoff site control, system maintenance, pollution prevention and good housekeeping, and an impervious area restoration treatment. Up until recently, our, the state mandated a 20% treatment credit. So all impervious area needed to receive treatment of 20% of them impervious area to be in compliance with our permit. We've been working towards that since 2007. We have about 462 acres of impervious area. 20% of that would be about 92 acres. To date, we've treated approximately 77, so we have 15 acres yet to go to be within compliance of our permit. The deadline for that was 2025. We are not alone in jurisdictions that have not been able to meet that deadline. We're particularly challenged in the city based on our extreme development and lack of space available for stormwater features. Many other jurisdictions can do stream restoration projects. All our streams are park and planning streams. So if there's credit to be had, they're tend to want to do it. Though we have had collaborative and cooperative arrangements, and many of our projects have included working with park and planning. But it's particularly challenging because we don't have wide open spaces to do some of the stormwater treatment things that some other jurisdictions can do. But we've been very persistent and very crafty and do what we can to meet what we, what we submit in an annual report to the state identifies our restoration program towards the future. So we've shown that we can meet those goals within a few years, and we've identified projects to do that. That said, we do anticipate in the next round of permitting, which is no telling what's going to happen with the current administration, but that was on board, and Maryland has been very aggressive in the water quality control permitting process. So I do imagine that will continue with the state. They've indicated that they'll increase the treatment requirement an additional 10%. So rather than 20% of our impervious area, we'll need to provide treatment for 30% of our impervious area. So we have a number of programs that we are implementing this year. In terms of council priorities, our climate change resiliency, our environmentally sustainable community is, is clear indication and fits within this priority through our stormwater program. As you all know, last couple of years, we had the Low Impact Development Center complete a stormwater resiliency study for us, looked at recommendations to address flooding and ecosystem risks. They identified 20 projects, and we've been developing our capital plans for the future. And over the next five years, we intend to implement 14 of those 20 projects. So we hope to make some great progress on that. We also review and prioritize the 2019 resiliency recommendations and take steps that build resilience and help meet other city goals, such as the tree canopy contribution. I have a slide that shows our stormwater infrastructure. We have a massive stormwater infrastructure that we inherited from WSSC. They were initially the agency that was responsible for stormwater pipes and installations. We have a system that's quite old, over 100 years old in some parts of the city. We have 19 miles of stormwater pipe underground, 744 inlets, and 78 outfalls that discharge stormwater into creeks and streams and channels. Since 2006, we have added treatment facilities, including 69 bioretention facilities, 13 modular wetland filtera systems, six permeable infiltration basins, one green roof here at the community center, two detention ponds, and almost 1,200 linear feet of stream restoration and 277 linear feet of outfall stabilization. Our, our entire system is mapped in GIS and regularly updated. In addition, one of the programs we have for maintenance is a TV video inspection of a fifth of our system annually. So every five years, we have gone our way through the pipes in the system and literally seen inside them to identify defects, faults, failures. In addition to the video, they also clean them. So that's something that we have ongoing throughout the five-year cycle. Our stormwater budget goals for FY '26, we want to continue working towards the council's budget resolution, which was identified in fiscal year '25, to develop a plan for funding additional projects identified by the LIDC study, including potential adjustments to stormwater fees to support this expansion. As a result of that, this budget shows a requested increase in our stormwater fees from the current $25 per 500 square feet to $30 per 500 square feet. I wanted to break down the budget expenditures by kind of item. Personnel is about $133,000. Half of our city engineer and a quarter of our construction manager are funded through the stormwater budget. So .75 FTEs. Engineering support has a budget proposed in FY '26 of 124,000. This covers contractual, technical support, survey and design assistance. This amount is an increase over prior years to reflect that, that need for additional technical support to move projects forward more rapidly. There's a category of mandatory services, as I mentioned, within our NPDES permit. There are things that we are mandated to do. That has a budget of $150,000. Thank you. Yahoo, we're back on. That includes, as I mentioned, the video inspection and cleaning of a fifth of the system annually, water quality testing of all dry weather outfalls, an illicit discharge detection and investigation system, and contractual facility maintenance and inspection. The other big chunk of money goes to system repair and improvements. That's also where you'll see an increase in the budget. Based on, we just can't win. That budget for, proposed for FY '26 is $300,000. Historically, we usually do about $200,000, so we've increased it, the request by 100,000 in order to facilitate, as I said, projects to get completed. This takes care of repair of existing inlets, outfalls and pipes. Some of the projects that we've proposed for FY '26, including one of the projects mentioned in the LIDC study at Boyd Avenue and Jackson Avenue, both at the playground itself and across the street where we have stormwater runoff, hopping the curb, going down the driveway and into people's backyards, an outfall repair on Central Avenue that affects Long Branch Stream. And one of the other programs we'd like to implement is inlet expansion. It was identified by LIDC, again, due to the age of some of our system. The inlets that were constructed are, some of them are smaller than that would be if they were put into place today. So this will begin what we hope is a multi-year ongoing program. As I mentioned, we have, what was that number? Quite a few inlets in our system. 744. Obviously, not all of them are deficient, but a good chunk of them are. So we're hoping at the rate of about 10 a year to start identifying those inlets that would be most helped by expansion of the size. This year, just along that lines, we'll be doing phase two of our Poplar Avenue project, which will include an inlet enlargement as well as a curb where we raise the curb and elevate driveway aprons and sidewalks to keep stormwater within the curb and off of private property. And lastly, the capital budgets component of the stormwater budget is a $235,000 amount. The two planned projects for next year are Jeffson Avenue Bio Swale Inlet and Erosion Repair and a project at Mississippi Avenue and Hilltop Road, which has experienced a lot of flooding from private property onto the road. That project was also identified in the LIDC study. We have already gone through our .75 FTEs, which is a very small, very mighty group. We could use about two or three more. I also wanted to point out some resources we have for residents that is a component of the LIDC study. One of the things that they did for us was include some homeowner's guide to residential drainage. So that lives on the city's website. It's kind of a overview of all things you need to know about maintaining stormwater runoff quality and the options you have to address and reduce and better manage runoff on your property. In addition, we have the rain plan, the stormwater calculator, which also lives on the city's website. And this is an interactive feature. You can go online, find your property, and it will pull up information related to help you calculate the amount of runoff that your property might generate, and then show the reductions and the improvements that could be had through the various different measures and techniques. Rain Plan also offers a virtual site visit at no cost to anyone, city resident who follows up, and then they can also discuss implementation and available contractors. I wanted to get into the details of revenue side of the stormwater budget. As I mentioned, our stormwater utility fees are the, by far, the biggest piece of that revenue stream. What's proposed in FY '26 is the stormwater utility fee amount of $927,000. The current amount in FY '25, based on the $5 lower fee, the $25 per 500 square feet, is just under $773,000. So this will be an increase of $154,000. The additional revenues, penalty interest miscellaneous, and stormwater fees all remain fairly consistent for a total stormwater budget revenue stream of just under $933,000. As I mentioned, our past stormwater impervious fee was based on $25 per 500 square feet. We're proposing to increase it to 30 in this upcoming fiscal year. At that new rate, the average stormwater utility paid by a single-family property owner will be $150 compared to the prior average of a little over 126. 19% of single-family owners will pay $90 or less in their annual stormwater fee. 61% will be, will pay between $120 and $180 a year. 16% will pay $210 to $270 a year. The highest fee charged to a single-family owner will be $570. When you get to the higher end of the impervious surface, it, you know, it gets kind of count on one hand, the number of people that have that level of charge. And then lastly, I've tried to break it down there, the revenue, where it will be coming from. So at that $30 rate, the single-family properties will contribute 561,000, commercial properties 334,000, government 100, 1,800, and condos and other, that number's actually incorrect, the 25,000 is current year. It would be $30,400 with the proposed higher rates. I think I've already mentioned the capital. I think I've already mentioned the capital items that are included in the stormwater budget. As I mentioned, there's the Jeffson Avenue bio-swell. The cost of that project is estimated to be $160,000. And then the Mississippi Avenue and Hilltop Road project with an expected cost of $70,000. Some of the things we've done to date, had quite a bit of work done in the last few years. The Broschir's Run Outfall Repair and Stream Restoration Project was completed at the end of the prior fiscal year. This year, through a collaboration with planning, we used CDBG funds for the Houston Avenue Filtra Project, which has been completed. We're just waiting to activate the filtras, which were delayed by a WSSC water main break, which just decimated Houston Avenue. And soon as WSSC comes back and fits the road, then we'll activate our filtras and get that going. The Sligo Mill pavement reduction and bioretention facility that I mentioned earlier, we've cleaned, we've done the video inspection and cleaning of Sub Basin 4, done the water quality testing at outfalls with dry weather flow and the outfall inspections. I mentioned the restoration of a number of bioretention facilities, and we did a major system improvement of the stormwater systems at Birch and Barkley Avenue. Currently, this spring and summer, we're planning to do the Albany Avenue and Baltimore Avenue Treatment Facility, where we'll be using permeable pavers and subsurface storage facility. The Garland Avenue and Davis Avenue installation of inlets, pipes, and a swell to direct and capture stormwater into the underground system and reduce impacts to private property. This was also an LIDC project. The Poplar Avenue Phase II, which I mentioned, which is enlarging inlets, elevating the curb and the driveway aprons. You may recall, the Phase I was where we replaced the stormwater structures in the rear of properties between Sycamore and Poplar Avenues. And then lastly, the planned restoration of some fairly old bioretention facilities, one at Old Carroll, the other at Holton Lane and New Hampshire Avenue. And that is the end of my presentation.
Great. Well, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
Do we have any questions? I do have one question. The proposal to increase the stormwater fee. What would be the impact if we were to decide not to raise that revenue stream? Is there a list of projects in order of priority? And you don't have to do it tonight, because I know that it's late, but it would be helpful for us to get a firmer handle on, if we were to not increase stormwater fees this year, what would be the potential impact in terms of the stormwater work that would be done? And any staff recommendations regarding projects that ultimately wouldn't make their way into the budget?
Yeah, because we focused the increase into two directed funds, one's for the technical support and the other for system outfall, system repair. It's about $160,000 of added fees. So if we were not to change the stormwater fee, we would have to reduce that amount from the budget, which would eliminate some of the programs that we have planned.
Councilmember Landon?
Is there a third option that would involve having different fee structure for commercial versus residential properties? The number of commercial facilities, some of them have very big impervious surfaces, but the numbers don't reflect a very significant amount of the contribution coming from.
Yeah, currently, our stormwater fee is applied equitably based on impervious area. So if you have a large impervious area, you have a larger fee. So that's reflected in the commercial structure. The commercial and all property owners are charged the same amount, $25 per 500 square feet of impervious surface. One of the things that we learned when we had our stormwater fee assessment done a couple of years ago is that in the past, we, our single-family properties were paying about 45%, and our commercial properties were paying about 55% of the overall stormwater fee. And when they did the impervious area analysis, what they found was we were overcharging commercial properties. They, together as a collective group, did not represent 65% of the impervious area. It ended up being almost exactly the opposite. Single-family homes represented 55% of the impervious area, and commercial properties represented 45. So now that's what you see reflected, that fee structure is even across the board. So every square foot of impervious area is charged the same. Many years in the past, we used to have a flat fee for single-family properties and the impervious area fee for everybody else. And the council made the decision in 2022 to implement that fee for impervious surface across the board to reflect that those properties with more impervious area would pay higher fees.
The impervious area includes the roof as well as the, so the government fee looks really small, except because we don't charge the city anything?
Well, it doesn't have cities. Yeah, we don't pay ourselves for, we don't pay ourselves to do our work. So it would just be Montgomery County facilities, and there is very few. A fire station is one of them.
And the public schools?
The public schools are not charged.
Are exempt.
Yes. What's that?
By state law.
State law, yeah. Yeah, they are considered state.
Thank you. Councilmember Lego?
Yes, great presentation. On the two capital projects, just the one that is related to the private property here, Mississippi Avenue and Hilltop Road, I suppose the question is, well, if it's happening on private property, is the private property owner covering some of that cost? And then I also wondered, related to that, whether the Jefferson Avenue one used any immense PPC property?
Yes. So for the Hilltop and Mississippi Avenue, the stormwater runoff is coming down a swell through several properties at a higher elevation. The end result is that Hilltop Road gets flooded out, mud slick that we have to take a backhoe and scrape and clear off the mud on extreme weather events, and all that mud ends up in Sligo Creek. So the project envisioned is to elevate the curb and create an inlet on the other side with a pipe system into the creek so that we could create a drainage pattern that will facilitate not having the mud run on the road and will let the water go through and into the, into the stream. So it will be a kind of a two-phase, elevating the roadway, elevating the curb, and providing an inlet and path for rainwater to flow. Without permission of the property owner, we won't be doing anything on private property. It'll all be taking place in the public right-of-way. For the project on Jefferson, if you've ever been to that section of Jefferson with park and planning property that goes down a steep slope into Sligo Creek Parkway, we have extensive erosion there from an outfall, one of our roadway outfalls, inlets that outfalls into the stream without adequate protection. So over the decades, it's just been cutting away and eroding that hillside. We do have a process worked out with park and planning. We have to get a permit from them. They are fairly stringent in their requirements, and we are required to meet all those conditions that they have. It's their land. We create the restoration program, and we get the credit for the stormwater program towards our state-mandated goals. We get permission to do that work on park and planning property. Park and planning has not ever availed funds to us, so the dollars for the project are city dollars. The runoff itself, of course, is from city streets and properties, so our water is going into our inlet and down into their property, as water will do. So, yeah.
Thank you. That is a really dramatic outfall, the way it's all dangling in space and everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Lego. Councilmember Gilbert?
Thank you. Very quick, first of all, thank you for delighting me having, that looks great.
Yeah.
And for the Phase II of the facility design, the wash bay, is it just going to be for public works vehicles or for all city vehicles?
Once in place, any city vehicle can use it. Currently, now, all city vehicle washing is done by contract out, but once we have a wash bay connected to sanitary sewer than any vehicle, we'd be able to use it.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Honsa?
Yeah, on the public works presentation, on page 11, I was just wondering if you could speak to the 51% decrease in the vegetation management division? Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, it was based on, and then, again, this is a comparison over '25. We rebid our contract maintenance and got a much more, a much lower price for the vendor that we're currently using than previous. Pardon me? Yes, yes, they still do the six, six times a year for all the facilities. But our FY '25 was a estimate of what we assumed the contract costs were going to be when we actually got the bids in. We had a very competitive bid process, and we're able to reduce that. So the '26 numbers reflect those real dollars.
Related to that, on then page 10, where you have your contracts increasing by 8%, is it, have y'all tried to rebid any of those?
I'll have to.
Yeah.
My pages got missed up.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what page you're.
It's the page right before the one you were just looking at.
Which division?
It's non-personnel budget increase in the building maintenance division.
Yeah, so entirely different, building maintenance versus vegetation maintenance. That $38,000 increase is primarily due to supplies, which would be some equipment we're purchasing, replacement floor scrubber, and some services and charges. So with that, it's largely subcontract work, whenever we have to call in plumbers, electricians, contractors. There is, we do have some contractual maintenance work, like our pesticide management is a contract, you know, long-term contract. We don't have many other long-term contracts within the facility maintenance of a similar nature, like somebody that's coming in every month to do XYZ, other than, trying to think of what ones we have in facility maintenance.
Generators.
Yes, our generators, our fire alarm systems, those things are all on. And that's fairly standard, not, we're not going to find a price reduction there. Yeah. Yeah, our elevators, we have service contracts, the annual certification for the elevators, all our fire alarms, our generators on a monthly basis, all those things that are required to be done to stay within the law.
I'm sorry, we are out of time for this discussion. All right, excellent. Thank you so much.
Jumping into traffic calming and sidewalk.
Traffic calming and sidewalks. Yeah. If you just give me a minute, I'll hold up. Last item for the evening.
Mayor, we just need a moment to pull up the slide.
Perfect.
City clerk is going to pull it up once in.
Okay.
I will be as brief as possible because I know we're the final item tonight. So thank you, Mayor, members of council. Very exciting. This is our first year with our new process to handle sidewalk and traffic calming requests. I really want to acknowledge the work done by our public work staff, our planning division staff, and our police staff in coming together and helping evaluate the requests that we received and providing useful information. So we're learning a lot from this process, and so we're going to jump right in. So we'll start with some background and methodology, the staff recommendations. There are some requests that need a little bit more study. There are some requests that we're not recommending, and then we'll move on to questions and discussions. So, next slide, please. So like I said, this is a new process. This is the first year that we've done it. These are the new administrative regulations that were passed in July of 2024. Next slide, please. And so the process, kind of as it was set, as it's set out in the administrative regs, is we take submissions from residents, moving away from the petition process to a more open process. And that was open through November of this past year. And these are all the requests that were considered as part of the FY '26 budget. The next stage was consultation with the community, and so we held a public meeting on, in February, to discuss these requests, get additional comments and feedback from the community. The next piece was an evaluation by city staff, looking at kind of some of the technical measurements. And now we're in kind of the approval stage where council will select projects to move forward with, and then we will do the design and implementation work in the coming fiscal year. Next slide, please. So looking at the criteria for the staff review, we looked at four kind of metrics. So looking at equity, safety, the trip generation, and then splitting off between, for traffic calming, some of the roadway characteristics, and then the population impact for sidewalks. And then additional considerations were done in evaluating the site by staff, looking at the right-of-way, some of the topologies in the context around the site. And this included both visual kind of site assessments using kind of mapping technology, but then also some site visits as well. Next slide, please. So looking at that, that's kind of looking at the high level. Most of these shared kind of the same metrics, but there were slight differences. Next slide. And this is our scoring methodology. So it's slightly different for our roadways and sidewalks. The roadways had a maximum score of 52, while our sidewalks had a maximum score of 48. And this was guided by our kind of Vision Zero work that the city has been doing in setting these weights. All right, next slide, please. So we have currently allocated $200,000 for traffic calming measures and $300,000 for sidewalks. What I will say is that we have projects that are under design, that are slated for construction. So those are the sidewalk projects at Chestnut and 13th. And so that is $150,000 is what we're estimating to complete those projects that are already in the pipeline. So between these two different pots of funding, there is about $350,000 that can be allocated really between traffic calming and sidewalks. So these number, these initial allocations are kind of, should, we're seeing them as grouped together, and that the allocation does not have to be for one bucket or another. There's some flexibility to move between these two. So we received 43 submissions, and what staff did as part of this process was consolidated requests. Some requests that came in, we're talking about the same exact block. And so we have 28 projects that were reviewed, actually 29, because there is a missing one that I'll get to in just a second. But we'll start with, next slide, please, our sidewalks. So there are six projects, and then the one, the kind of two carryover projects that we're grouping together. They are Wildwood Avenue and Glenside, Hammond, and Ann Street. Not quite yet. Garland Avenue, Central Avenue, Jackson Avenue, Hancock Avenue, and then our previous Garland Avenue, Central Avenue, Jackson Avenue, Hancock Avenue, and then our previous, the 13th and Chestnut ones. Next slide, please. I want to briefly highlight that there are four, what I would say, staff kind of requests or projects in there. These came from kind of two sources. All of them were based on kind of as we went through these requests, looking at these streets. Some of them, particularly the traffic calming ones, were where a request was not feasible. Staff did try to look for an alternative option that might be doable. And then in the case of Hancock Avenue, this is looking at kind of the sidewalk network, and what came up was connectivity. And so this is the kind of genesis while we were looking at Garland and Central, this came up as a kind of source of completing that sidewalk network. Looking at the sidewalk table, what you'll see is you'll see a column for design and a column for construction. What we anticipate is that it will take about a year to design these sidewalks and then another year to construct them. So when you're thinking about allocations for sidewalks, we recommend that you look at the design portion, with the exception of 13th and Chestnut, which would be moving into the construction phase. So currently, here's about $400,000, a little over $400,000 in design work among these different projects for council consideration. Next slide, please. Moving on to our traffic calming projects, there are six projects listed there. There's one project that we did fail to get in, and I'll talk about it just briefly. Next slide. Most of these are speed humps. The ones that, there is one, the Grant Avenue marked crosswalk. Crosswalks are not usually part of this process. This is part of the design of the Chestnut sidewalk, and part of the reason why we're calling this out specifically is that it is planned for. And also, there was a request for speed humps on Grant Avenue, and in looking at it, we didn't find it feasible because of the slope along Grant Avenue, but we did want to call out that there are changes to address safety because it is a concern there. There is one project that did not make it into this list. It is Speed Humps at, thank you, the 7,400 block of Wildwood. It has a score of 51 and would cost $5,000. And we will subsequently update this list to make sure it's included. And I want to thank the resident that caught that. It just didn't make it in. It was scored and evaluated. The final kind of list just didn't make it in. So we did go, and Roz makes a good point, we went back and checked kind of that list to make sure there weren't any other stragglers that didn't make it over.
Council member, Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, just another slide that you want to look at, because the one we're looking at and the one you're talking from are not the same, on slide seven, while you're, while we're on technical corrections. You don't have to do it now, but if you're revising the slides anyway. Thank you.
So we have about $40,000, $45,000 to, and in traffic calming kind of suggestions in this list. Most of these are kind of located in Ward Six, with two in Ward Two and one in Ward One. Next slide, please. So there were some projects that were requested that have implications around circulation that we would need to study further. In the CIP, as we mentioned, there is funding for traffic studies, about $75,000. What we are recommending is council provides some guidance to us to take a look at one of these projects. The reason why is that changing to a one-way or limiting traffic during off-hours is something that we can do, but it would change circulation in that neighborhood, and we would want to understand where that traffic is going before we implemented any of these changes. One of the difficulties is we haven't done many traffic studies before. We are starting, we recently put out an RFP for the Ward Six traffic study, looking at New Hampshire Gardens, and we're expecting to get responses back in April. But we haven't done many of these in the past, so we don't have a good sense of how much these are going to cost. And so what we're recommending is giving us direction on one of them. That said, if we can go forward with bids for more, we just wouldn't be able to accurately necessarily provide a good estimate at this time. Next slide, please. So there are 10 projects that are not recommended by staff. These fall into typically code restrictions. So Chapter 13 sets forth some of our code requirements around traffic calming. There are also some safety concerns, and then there's some issues regarding kind of feasibility or enforcement. So for example, there were requests for no-through traffic signs. These aren't enforceable signs, and so staff is not recommending the installation of any of these. The next slide, please. This is the full list of kind of projects that we are not recommending at this time. Next slide, please. There's also six projects that are outside of the city's jurisdiction. Three of these projects are actually being contemplated and designed by MNCPPC. So this is Flower Avenue and Garland Avenue, that crosswalk there, Sligo Creek Parkway at Heather Avenue, and then Sligo Creek and Cherry Avenue. And so those are being done by MNCPPC. Next slide, please. So where we're at today is we're looking for direction from council on projects to include in this budget process. We realize that this is a lot of information coming at you, so we are happy to come back for an additional kind of time to consider, answer questions. Staff, looking at the calendar, we're planning April 9th as kind of a, an additional work session if necessary. And then as part of kind of the adoption of the budget, we'll draw, draw up an ordinance with the list of projects to be funded. Any projects not funded as a result of this project would just be rolled forward into future years for consideration. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, and I know that it went pretty fast, but I'm pretty sure there's a lot of folks with questions. Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you. I have specific questions about some of the Ward Two recommendations, and I'm going to assume that you want us to write those down and send them to you so that we don't spend time talking about them tonight. So just, can you please?
11 o'clock, 11:07.
Can you say what you?
Yep, so, so I stated at the beginning of the meeting that this is not your one bite at the apple, that folks have an opportunity to submit any questions that require staff follow-up to David, and David will work to make sure that those answers are provided.
Okay, thank you. So that said, I have a couple of clarifying questions.
Can we please stick to one question tonight? Because I know that there are others that have questions, and if we could please just stick to one.
Okay, so the, I had two, but I'll ask one. The Lincoln Avenue was a bunch of different people, making a bunch of different suggestions. So did you, did you look at it holistically, or did you look at the specifics? Because the, what you've got in the slides makes it look like you've looked at the specifics.
Yeah, so in most cases, what we are trying to do is consolidate into, especially if they were looking at the same kind of section. So for example, Wildwood had a number of like responses all about, you know, either the same couple of blocks. So the idea was is to consolidate those together and consider them kind of as one project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lannan.
Speaking of consolidation, so you referred to Chestnut as a carryover project. When you say that, are you talking about that whole cluster of sidewalks, Hodges, Chestnut? That's the whole cluster that you're saying there?
There's three sidewalks that are currently in design in that neighborhood, one at Darwin, one at Hodges Lane, and one at Chestnut.
Okay, all three of those come under Chestnut.
Yeah, no, they're each considered separately. So the Darwin Avenue and Hodges Lane have reached final design, and so we've just added, solicited votes for the construction vote because it's part of the old system. So that'll be completed in mid-April, and then they would go, if they were, if the majority residents responded was affirmative, we would move it into the construction queue. There's money in this year's budget to construct those sidewalks. Chestnut Avenue is not at final design. There's still a lot of discussion among the neighbors, and we're hoping to schedule a field walk. The impacts of the sidewalk will reduce the width of the roadway, and so there is some consideration of a one-way street there. So both independent of the sidewalk, the residents had talked about that, as well as our design engineers had said, this may be a street you want to make one way. So it kind of dovetails those two together, but so that's assuming construction, if it were to move forward in the next fiscal year.
Councilmember Hansak. On slide 13, could you just clarify which of those four projects you said were the ones that staff proposed? That's the only place where the staff proposed those, right? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, so outside of the sidewalk at Hancock Avenue, what we're talking about is the 7,800 block of Kennewick. There were a number of questions around Hammond and that kind of area, and there was police data on speeding in that area, and so it was part of kind of that conversation. We talked about the Grant Avenue one, the marked crosswalk, and then the final one is, let me, Lincoln.
There were some sidewalks.
Lincoln Avenue, the speed humps there, and that, I believe, is an outcropping of some, there were a number of requests around Lincoln, and so we were kind of consolidating that into one project.
Yeah, and that else, also, that grew out of the field walk that we did on Lincoln Avenue at the request of residents, where we identified locations for additional, both crosswalks as well, additional speed humps, so that, that reflected that. We also, the Jackson Avenue and Hancock Avenue sidewalks were staff recommendations.
That's four?
Yes.
Somebody else has it, I'm not.
This spreadsheet is the same list, but it has a lot more information.
Okay, Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes, my question was about streets that are judged to be over 8% gradient, and I'm only, I've already posed that, but I'm asking because I think it might apply to maybe Grant Avenue as well. I know Orchard was one where we have a two-block stretch, and it looks like the lower block is less than that gradient, and the upper block's higher. So does the ordinance look at a long span of a street, or does it look at block by block when, when making that gradient determination?
Yeah, so when we were doing the calculations, we were looking by block. In the case of some of them, it's, and, and it was a very good question about Orchard and Fourth, and we wanted to provide some clarity there, that there's a number of different feasibility factors. So the gradient is one, there's the envelope for driveways, and then there's intersections to consider. And so while there might be a long kind of block, where those driveways are and where the intersections are, in addition to the grade can make it so that the placement of a traffic calming improvement is not feasible within the scope of that right-of-way. And so when we were looking at it, we were looking not only at the scope, the slope, but also these other context, contextual factors as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Westle.
Thank you so much, and thanks for responding to the resident pointing out that, that missing speed bump. My question is, I wanted to just get a specific sense for the sidewalk, Wildwood and Glen Side, where exactly, are we talking about putting a sidewalk?
If you think, as you're looking at the traffic circle, and right now there's a crosswalk across Wildwood, the traffic circle, and the sidewalk comes up on the right side, crosses, and then continues on the left side. So this would continue that sidewalk on the left side around the nose of their last property above the circle.
Ah, okay.
Just over to Glen Side, and then there'd be a crosswalk there, so you could cross at Glen Side, cross Glen Side into the church property.
Great, thank you.
That's why it's such a low price, because it's only about, what do we say, 60 feet or something?
It's like in front of one house or something, okay. I'm just adding one brief comment on the, this is more for council. The, the list of projects, sorry, that need a traffic study, that they've, staff has suggested us to pick one, I just want to highlight that one of those is a road in New Hampshire Gardens, the Hammond between Ann Street and Lochne. So if we fund a full traffic study of New Hampshire Gardens, I don't think we then need to consider that. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that as we're looking and deciding what to fund there.
Thank you, Councilmember Westle, because that was actually going to be my question, because we have, and if I, and it's late, and I took cough medicine before coming here. The, the, the traffic, the traffic study that is being planned for New Hampshire Gardens that we've released an RFP for, correct? How do you think that the results of that study might impact what ultimately gets installed in New Hampshire Gardens? So to Councilmember Westle's point about sidewalks or traffic calming and the like, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts where we are putting in a bunch of speed bumps and sidewalks that ultimately the traffic study will come back and say, no, you should actually put it on this area, and that's, so is the idea for, for us to name specific projects right now, or is the idea more of making sure that there's resources available to actually implement that traffic study recommendations?
So what I would say is the traffic studies will be the driver of most of staff's kind of additions kind of in future years. So what we're asking for in this process is to, among these requests, identify which ones to fund for either on the sidewalk side, design in FY '26, or for traffic calming construction in FY '26. And so what I would say is for items in New Hampshire Gardens, it might be worthwhile to hold off construction of any traffic calming devices in FY '26 pending those study results, which would provide a kind of more comprehensive view at what would work, and those recommendations would make it in, ideally for FY '27, potentially FY '28, depending on when this traffic study is concluded.
Thank you. And I think the biggest thing for me is trying to balance the real need to slow people down now, especially, I'm just, we are getting ready for some complaints with the right-turn-only at New Hampshire and University, like everyone should just get ready. But the, the question for me is one of, of that balance, right? So if it is the case that there are some shorter-term, low-cost things that could be done to kind of slow people down a little bit, now, $5,000, 15, you know, 500, 500, $5,500 speed bump or two, but we may need to do some more massive modifications based on the recommendations from the traffic study. I just want to make sure that we're able. from the traffic study. I just want to make sure that we're able to balance that. And the, the RFP for, for the traffic study, is that that's already posted, so we would have the ability to look at the scope that's outlined in that study? Okay.
Yeah, and to your point, Mayor, what we've proposed in here is fairly modest, low-cost, as well as, you know, more traditional speed humps. We saw with the police's evaluation that there was speeding in the 780 block of Kennewick, because it's a street in the north section that just connects two roads. Not much of a traffic study is going to affect that. The 7,400 block of Wildwood is a request that the city's had for quite a while. So, you know, those seem like low-hanging fruit. What I anticipate and what we're hoping that the traffic engineering study can get into is more is those systemic solutions, like restricted access, time access, one-way streets, those kind of things that we can't get at ourselves with our limited resources. Because that's really the only way you're going to move the needle in neighborhoods like that, where there's just such volume of traffic coming through.
Yeah.
I would just add also that the request for proposals specifically calls out both short-term and long-term, recognizing that there's an immediate need because of spillover of purple line construction, and a long-term change when that construction is finished. And then we need to see where we stand and how to move forward. So we broke that out specifically.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let me see how many minutes we have left. You might have enough time. Hold on. Let's see. I'm trying to make sure I'm sticking to the time. We have 11 minutes. Now, the question is, do you want to ask another question, or do you want to go home?
Or would you like $200 that the mayor will give you?
Councilmember Hansak.
I'm sorry, I just, I just need really strongly to say, I know you've had a lot of emails back and forth from me about my frustrations, if you will, part of it, which was my fault for misunderstanding some of the forward movement on this. But I have to say that having now finally kind of contemplated that, that there are some staff requests in here, I, I continue to feel frustrated that I don't see anything. There's not one thing in here for Ward 5, and we have the fewest speed bumps, the fewest traffic calming. And so I guess I want to say this in front of my colleagues as well, is there anything that we can do at this stage, moving into this year, where we're about to go into very tight budget times? And I guess, I mean, I'm, I really want to, I just don't have the time. I really want to look at some of these and say, could I, in good faith, fund any of these, knowing that there's not, and it's not, it's not your fault that these weren't put forward. But like, like, I mean, Houston Avenue has been asked for a traffic study for years. I had asked them to wait, but it probably hasn't rolled over because they didn't ask again this year. And I just don't know what to do about it. I don't want to be out of order. You know, I, I just, I feel incredibly, incredibly frustrated to put these dollars into that. So I'm just saying that. If you have any comments, feel free, but I just need to say that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do just want to remind everyone that there, there is the budget reconciliation process.
I know, but I hate to be the bad guy.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Yeah, if I could just, just to illustrate one particular point that I think you may be, that might illustrate, we were talking about Councilmember Hansak. When I was looking at the sidewalk map, it's quite striking that Roanoke, if I'm seeing correctly, has no sidewalks with all of those apartments along it. And I haven't, I haven't walked along there recently, but it would seem like no sidewalk on either side where you have cars pulling into parking would be tricky, from a safety standpoint.
To add one, or to, you're saying to not have any?
It would be tricky for pedestrians.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a place where I'm even more concerned about it, which I've brought to the staff's attention with our dense housing unit. But again, this kind of analysis wasn't possible for me on my own over the last several months.
Yeah, and this kind of illustrates the challenge in a city like ours, as along those sections of Roanoke, exactly where you're talking about, there is no public right-of-way outside the curb. So that would require Eastman's and homeowner's approval, and in many cases, there's steep slopes down from those curbs into the apartments that are down below. So it's not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all situation, which also is kind of reflected in some of the traffic calming. A lot of the streets in Ward 5 are sloped down from Flower to Sligo Creek Parkway, and a lot of them are cul-de-sacs, which we don't put, you know, speed bumps on cul-de-sacs. So some of it is organically within the type of roadway it is. It's not a reflection of it's been neglected. It just, the road doesn't allow itself to have those types of measures.
Yeah, there is the one structure with the dense house that I will say.
Councilmember Westle.
I'll, I'll just share one, one maybe last thing that, Councilmember Hansak, I'd be really happy to sit down and talk with you, knowing that Ward 6 is strongly represented here, I think because of a strong need. But given that we all value equity so much, and given that this is the first year of a process where we're working out the kinks, I think that, I, I don't think that we absolutely have to stay ironclad that nothing else could be added if we think that in the grand scheme of things, it's what's best for the city at large.
Okay. Again, I would encourage staff that if you, I encourage council members, if you have questions regarding a specific location, to send those questions into staff so that they can look at the, the location and provide any feedback regarding costs associated with any ideas that you have regarding the needs of that area.
Yeah. And, and what I would say is, I'm not sure, so we spent a lot of staff hours going through all of these. I'm not sure we'd be able to do that substantive scoring that we did, but we can at least make sure that we can put a cost, a general cost estimate to it.
And I know that one of the things, to Councilmember Hansak's point, I know one of the things that we were trying to get to the point of doing is having a process that is not petition-based. And although we don't have petitions, it's still very much right now a complaint-based system. Now, right now, the complaints are rooted in, the complaints are rooted in those areas of the city where we have, we know that there are known problems, right? So there is some validity to those complaints that are being raised. But I do think, to Councilmember Hansak's point, that if we can take a more data-driven approach to identifying gaps in, in, you know, traffic calming versus volume versus where there are breaks in sidewalks, that we, we don't have any coverage, that we do our due diligence to look at those locations as well, at least we'll be able to say, hey, we looked at it like Roanoke, and it's just not feasible. So again, I would encourage, because it could very well be a reason, we've looked at it, and it's just not feasible. So if there are specific, if there is a specific project, Councilmember Hansak, that you have a question regarding, I would encourage you to follow up with staff about that.
Is, last, last question is the safety action plan. That is contemplated, would that contribute to, to this discussion of a citywide look at where things are needed, where the gaps are?
I think that would be separate outside of this process. This process is, yeah, more about the requests from residents as a replacement to the petition process.
Okay, all right. Great. Not seeing any more hands. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.